Connected to Williams.
Good evening. I'd like to open the 26th meeting of the Milton Planning Board. I should say, the 26th meeting of fiscal year 2019. I am Cheryl Taggias, the chair.
Rich Beeler, member.
William Clark, planning director.
April Anderson Lammerow, member.
We have two members who are participating by phone this evening, so if you could start with Denny.
Yes, this is Denny Swinson, secretary.
And Kathleen?
This is Kathleen O'Donnell.
Kathleen, if you doze off, we're gonna, we won't be able to tell, but we know it's 2:00 a.m. in Sweden where you are, so thank you for participating. Okay, so our next meetings, we had scheduled for July 11th and July 25th, and then August 8th and August 22nd. I had talked with Bill about availability and agenda items and suggested that we cancel our July 11th meeting. If we find that that's problematic as we work through the agenda, we can revisit that, but that's the plan for now. On the approval of minutes, I did review and make edits of the minutes from May 9th and May 23rd, but I just sent those to Julia today, so I'd like to suggest that we defer those, so that everyone has a chance to review the edits. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, great. So we'll move to citizens speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address an item that is not on our agenda? So there are three items on our agenda after this. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board for an item that's not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, all right, we have, we have one minute until our public hearing at 7:15 for 524 Adams Street, which is a continuation of the site plan approval. We will then next move to a continuation of a special permit renewal for Thayer Nursery, and then we'll go to old business of the Pulte Affordable Unit Discussion. And I would say, I'm going to say it is 7:15 now, and we will have, we will open the site plan approval, public hearing again for 524 Adams Street. So please come forward. So Mr. Corkbrun was not here at our last meeting, Mr. Falcone was.
Good evening.
Good evening. We just requested a couple additional items, which I think you've emailed and sent to us. So if you want to focus on that additional information, then I think we can get probably through this fairly quickly.
Okay. And I do have printed copies of the photometric plans that I had emailed within the last week or two. And I know we've had several iterations of updated building plans as we've adjusted. And this is sort of the way that Steve Tedesco, who is the architect with us, can explain a little bit, but I think the last questions were marrying up the window and door and lighting schedule, and then with dimensional, so we did provide that material. And I think there was a question that came relative to the height of lighting, particularly on the side, elevation in the rear. The side elevation of lighting brought down about a foot. It can't be lower than 12 feet because garbage trucks and other trucks do traverse in and out of the court, the private way that's between, in particular, there are five dumpsters in the other building, you know, for the liquor store and others, and those have to be empty regularly. And garbage trucks have to back up with inches on either side to make it so that those lights have to be at a height that's sufficient.
Just, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I'll just back up. We received the photometric by email, and I sent an email saying that I noticed that the lighting was mounted at different heights on different elevations, so I asked them if they could take a look at that, and that's what Ned is referring to.
So Steve, if you want to just quickly identify, you know, with the last iterations of the buildings, we'd have to put these on a plan and deliver them in, but assuming that that do define.
I just wanted to add some clarity to this. I understand there was some confusion on the windows for the last meeting. So what we're doing, what we're proposing here is, basically, these are, this is all the existing head height of the storefront, the existing storefront, but just propose new storefront right here. So these four windows are exactly the same, and this one takes up the odd dimension in the center to make it balanced.
That's where the door, formerly the door was located, a door.
The door is existing, this is the existing door. There's one door.
Right, but there had been two before, right?
There were two doors in this area, but now they're proposing one door.
And what we have up here are the, we're using the, all the existing openings, window openings, so that comes out to the, these windows are approximately 30 inches by 60 inches in height, and we're proposing a double hung window six over one. So all of the windows on the sides, in the rear, they're all exactly the same. It's a six over one, 30 by 60. The only, the windows that are a bit different are the bays, the extension of the bay, the front of the bays, those are about 38 inches wide, but those also will be a six over one double hung. And then the side windows are approximately the same size as these. So it's basically, it's just two windows, two window sizes on the, on the second floor. And again, and this also shows the location of the sconces, proposed sconces, they're also noted in the windows, in the schedule, finished in the lighting schedule, fixture schedule, and those are all located, and also we have them in the rear. And then the three, the three washlights, we lowered them from the last, from the last presentation, and also, as we just discussed, we lowered these to 12 feet on the sides to protect them from the, to truck traffic. That's, that's what we're looking at right now.
And.
Or the corner. We wrap the corner.
Oh, the corner, yes, this corner, thank you. This corner here, that's where the alley is, the, we're wrapping the ephes on the corner, we're bringing it back about four feet to the, to the side.
And then the material from there is?
This is all existing brick, which will be all cleaned up.
And then it's siding in the back?
No, this is ephes, this will be ephes in the back.
In the back also?
Yes.
Okay, so were there clapboards now?
This is, this is filled in, right here and here, so that's filled in for the new stair. So this is all, this whole facade is all ephes with control joints, as shown.
And you still intend to have sign lighting as well?
Yeah, we have, we're showing here. I know there was, there was a concern over the last round there with the size of the sign bands. So the sign band, I broke up, I broke up the sign bands over each storefront with an individual light for each store, for each sign.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions or comments about that?
I think it looks really nice.
Thank you.
And Denny and Kathleen, did you get a chance to review what was emailed to us in terms of the revised, actually it was in our packets, but I think the email was the photometric, but in the packets. So Kathleen, I don't know if you received the packet before you left?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did.
I did too.
Okay, great. So the only difference in what we're seeing now is that they've lowered some of the lights, so that's the only difference from what you've seen and reviewed.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm fine. The others are fine, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you for providing the additional information, for sending it in advance, which is very helpful, especially when people are on the phone. So if there are no other questions or comments, is someone ready to make a motion on this matter?
Please.
Yes, thank you for reminding me.
That would require a motion.
And that requires a motion, too.
Oh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan approval for 524 Adams Street.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have to do a roll call vote, so Cheryl Taggias, yes?
Rich Beeler, yes.
April Anderson Lammerow, yes?
Denny?
Kathleen O'Donnell, yes.
Denny Swinson.
Sorry, Denny, you said?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, now to.
Do we need to hear from the public or not? Oh, we already closed the hearing, so we're good.
Um, Cheryl?
Yes.
On a separate matter, I'm having a little trouble hearing the public, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to listen to the live broadcast, but it's on a delay, so if I'm a little delayed hearing you, that's why.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan approval for 524 Adams Street as presented.
Um, so Cheryl Taggias.
Denny, we can hear your TV.
So there's a delay, okay. Maybe you have to be on mute, Denny, until you're ready to vote, okay? All right, so April has, has made a motion to approve based on the most current drawings, since, to be clear, we've had three sets of drawings, and I understand we're going to get a fourth set, which will show the locations of the light fixtures. So the, the drawings to which we'll need to have the decision, we'll need to reflect the revision and a date, so we'll just make sure that that's in the language. So is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, Rich has seconded. Any further comment?
Just a question.
Yes.
So I remember when we first heard, I know either Bill or Lauren kind of talked through...
The parking?
No, just in general, right, the overall. I didn't know if there.
You want to go back through that?
No, I don't. I just want, my question was just with the changes, was there anything like new, or, I mean, is that like, we're still good with? Okay.
Nothing changed. No changes.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Right. So the reason for the request to come back had to do with the photometric, right?
Understood.
And then the other thing, just again, for publics, there was initial application, which did not include any addition on this, an additional half story. Then there was an amendment to it, which included a half story, and then it went back to removing the half story. So what we're approving now is the existing building infilling the openings on the first floor in the back, and facade improvements, including the lighting. This doesn't trigger, because it's pre-existing, it does not trigger any further requirements for parking, addressing parking, just to be clear.
Yeah, and I was, just to be clear, I was more thinking, like, so aside from knowing exactly what, you know, law, bylaws or anything to get these lights, or where the windows are, that's why I'm looking at Bill, just, if there's no changes to anything, then I'm good.
There's no changes. The windows were all filled in years ago, because they kept getting ripped out because the trucks backed down the alley. There's no lights in the alley, there's no requirement to put lights in the alley because it's privately maintained, but so that it becomes a pedestrian way, the applicant has agreed to put lights there for a public safety component. They're not lighting anybody else's property but his own.
Okay, great.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay.
So I submitted a, a draft of a decision that would simply require one change, and that would be the date for the most recent three sheets would be dated June 27, as opposed to 17. We can submit a new first page to that if the board.
When you do submit that, the, there's a, on the second page, there's a reference to drawings A2 and A2.1. I think that you should refer to the revised drawings that were dated the 17th.
Yes, dated December 26.
Yeah, okay. But you're looking for us to provide the signature page, and then you'll follow up with Bill? Okay. Does anyone have any concern about that approach?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, so, all those in favor, Cheryl Taggias, yes?
Rich Beeler, yes.
April Anderson Lammerow, yes.
Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, yes.
Denny Swinson, yes.
All right.
I will chase Kathleen and Denny for the signatures when they come back.
I wrote on mine, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a nice fourth, everybody.
Thank you.
And that's everyone, sorry, for my oldest, he's just landed in the far Middle East, and we need to have a song.
Sorry about that.
We will pray for him.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Just two copies?
Sorry?
Just two copies?
Two copies. One for them, one for the clerk. Thank you.
Okay, we have about two minutes before the 7:30 public hearing for Thayer. Bill, do you have any staff report?
What I do have is, I know that there is an issue with the, somebody asked me about the green stripe in front of Woodlot Drive on Unquity Road. I know that there's been a bit of a hiccup in getting that Harland Street at Unquity Road started, and since roadwork is roadwork, I know that it will not start this week because the state police asked that it be not happen during July 4th, because of the usage in the park. So that one got pushed back a little bit, the rain has pushed back all the other projects around, so putting the green stripe down has been pushed back a bit, too. It will be happening sooner, not later. Before they finish the Harland Street, they'll be at least one coat down. We do know that it will most likely have to be done again when they do the final coat, but there will be a green stripe going in front of Woodlot very shortly.
When you say very shortly, do you think?
Within the month.
Within the month, okay.
July.
Okay. Great. And I know that Mr. Sloan sent an email to me about that. Mr. Sloan, do you have any question about that?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other updates for us? One minute?
60 seconds or less.
No, I guess I want to say thank you to Lauren. Lauren left, she's now down in Cohasset, she has the director of planning job in Cohasset, so we won't be seeing her anymore. I will, but some of the board members will. I know some of the, another one of the board members is actually seeing her next week, so she can't get far away.
Well, maybe she can share some best practices from what they do in Cohasset as we look at our rules and regs.
There you go.
All right, so I'm going to call for opening the Thayer Nursery Special Permit Renewal Public Hearing. And we have attorney Marion McCuttrick joining us.
Breezy right here. This feels kind of good.
Are you sure, because we can ask Bill to modify that?
No, it's fine. It's quite nice.
Speeds up the process.
Yeah.
So we have a memo from Marion, but we also, at the last meeting, we continued, and Mr. Johanning was stopped with his comments, and we said that we would pick up where we left off. So Marion, would it be okay if you moved to the side and we bring Mr. Johanning back up, and then, and then we can address some, the things that you have picked up on and addressed from his comments provided previously, and then if there's further public comment from others, you can respond to that as well if you're ready. Okay, so welcome, Mr. Johanning.
Thank you. Field trial hunting, 23 Parkwood Drive. We ask that a special permit not be issued to Thayer Nursery because they do not qualify as applicants. They have not strictly complied with the 2016 special permit. The town has not strictly enforced the 2016 special permit. The landscaping business is not in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood as required by Mass General laws. If a special permit is issued, we ask that protections for neighbors be strengthened, or at least that no changes be made whatsoever to the existing special permit, including the term, primarily because there has not been strict compliance, nor has there been strict enforcement. Marion states that eligibility is not an issue, but it is. The planning board will issue the permit, not Town Council or Marion. The planning board must be confident that the applicants qualify. Qualification is the most fundamental issue. I would contend that Maggie and Josh have a special permit, and that Thayer Nursery Corporation runs a nursery. None of the applicants have both requirements. Thayer Nursery Corporation is not Maggie and Josh, it is a separate legal entity, even if they are the owners. If Thayer Nursery Corporation were Maggie and Josh, why would it exist? The board must make an informed decision on this matter first and foremost. It is always possible that members of the board could disagree with the town's argument in court. I understand that the town argued in court, and it actually stated in the special permit on page 22, that the planning board therefore finds that the landscaping business use, subject to appropriate terms and conditions, will not cause substantial detriment to the neighborhood. That is, the landscaping business will be in harmony with the character of the neighborhood if conditions are met. Does the town's argument and the statement in the special permit hold up if there is not strict compliance and if there is not strict enforcement? The words "strict compliance" and "shall" in the special permit create a high standard, which has not nearly been met. I'd like for the board to address specifically during these hearings how each of the following are in harmony with the residential character of our neighborhood in light of the deficiencies in compliance and enforcement that I will address. Hours of operation, starting at 7:00 a.m. every day, including Sundays. Level of noise, including bobcats, golf, bobcats, golf carts, backup alarms, and wood deliveries. Large delivery truck traffic on our roads. Water runoff from impervious areas like the huge wood barn and maintenance shop roof. The first thing I'd like to do, it's kind of difficult with people on the phone, but I'd like to hand out a decision of Mr. Prondak that I appealed with his own Board of Appeals. I've highlighted the parts I want to talk about. I complained about lights not being in compliance with, lighting at the nursery not being in compliance with the special permit. I talked about how the vehicles really, he says, "One van has been replaced by a Mercedes of similar size, capacity, and noise output." To that, I disagree. He says.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johanning, when you say "he," who are you referring to?
Oh, Joe Prondak, this is Joe Prondak's, see, it's from Joe Prondak.
I just wanted, for the people on the phone to.
Sure, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I understand. Then I disagreed with his conclusion about backup alarms. I disagreed with his conclusion about the required rubber lining, rubber matting for the dump trucks. And in addition, he talked about certain information that was requested from Thayer Nursery, and he said he did not receive it. Lights, page 12 of the special permit says, "The lighting plan is shown on sheet five of the site plan. Applicants shall direct exterior lights downward and install covers to shield them, such that the lamps shall not be visible off-site. Light levels shall be kept as low as reasonably practical. All lights used in the business operation shall be turned off at the close of business each night, except the granite post lights. Security lighting may be established with the approval of the planning board." The special, the special permit does not give the option of turning the lights off. So that was, Joe said, "Well, they just won't use them." That's not an option. So when, when strict compliance is required, this is not strict compliance. And in fact, if a change needs to be made, somebody would have to come before the planning board. I don't believe that Joe Prondak has the authority to change a special permit that was negotiated over a year's time.
So, I'm sorry, may, may I?
Sure.
So I just want, again, to be clear, this is dated March 2nd of 2018?
Yes.
And so we have a letter from Mr. Prondak that's more recent than that, so I'm going to ask him to, to see if he will comment on this for us, but if you want to continue.
Sure.
Okay.
"A van and a truck are not the same. The weight may be the same at this moment, but no bed has yet been installed on the truck. If a bed is installed, how does that change the weight or the capacity of the truck?" So I see no similarity between a truck and a van. The van was disposed of, the truck was acquired. So I, I again, take exception to Mr. Prondak's conclusion. "The special permit says that, to the extent legally possible, backup alarms on bobcats and trucks will be deactivated or set at the lowest possible sound level." In fact, he, Mr. Prondak agrees that OSHA permits backup alarms to be turned off, but he says he's not going to require it. Again, this, the decision of the, of the planning board was that they would be turned off if legally permissible, and he made the decision to change the special permit. It says, on page 16 of the special permit, it states that applicants' dump trucks will be lined with sport floor stamina performance rubber flooring to prevent excess noise during loading. And then Mr. Prondak, in number five of his, I'll call it a report, says, "Two of Thayer's dump trucks have their beds lined." In the permit, it says, "The dump trucks," not two or not three, five, five dump trucks need to have their beds lined. And, and the reason for that is to limit the amount of noise to the neighbors when wood is dumped into the, into the bed. On page 24 of the special permit, it says, "Failure to grant access to required records shall be a material violation of this special permit." So at the bottom, Mr. Prondak says he didn't receive the information. That's a material violation. So.
So to be clear, though, the certificate of occupancy wasn't granted until after this date or before this date?
Before, before. There's another correspondence with Joe Prondak later. What we're getting at is enforcement. So I mentioned to Joe Prondak in the spring of 2019, I, in the spring of 2019, his responses are in exhibit two. Joe's initial response is shown in his email on 417, and I'll direct you to the second page, number four. It says, "The required trees along the Parkwood Drive abutting properties appear to be healthy. Thayer to double-check trees required by special permit and trees required by private agreement and report back." It also says in number seven, "Josh agreed to discontinue parking of commercial vehicle in his driveway at 24 Forest." Number nine, "Lighting specified in the special permit has not yet been installed." So I first mentioned this back in 2018, and he's saying it's still, still not installed. After that, after I received his, his report on the 17th of April, I sent him these trees, these pictures of trees. These are the trees along the Parkwood Drive side. These are the trees along the Parkwood Drive side.
I got one, but I can share if you want.
No, no. You've got plenty.
Another set?
Pardon me?
Do you have another set?
Sure.
Thank you.
So at the top of the page—page one, Joe says, "We certainly did see the dead trees." I'll just remind you that in number four, on the back, he says, "The required trees along Parkwood Drive abutting properties appear to be healthy." Then he says, "We certainly did see the dead trees," after he received my photographs. Thayer asserted that some of the trees that died are not part of the special permit requirements and may have been part of a separate and private agreement with the Butters. It says that Thayer is to check this assertion and report back, meaning that we are not done here. Also, he talks about the drainage system, and he's saying that he's instructing Thayer to obtain reports on the drainage system and provide them to the town engineer. So I'm not sure why Joe didn't read the special permit himself regarding plantings on page eight of the special permit. It takes a few seconds or less. Joe states that Thayer asserted that the dead trees are not part of the special permit requirement. The permit states—the—the permit itself states that the applicants will supplement existing plantings between the lot line for N12-7, my home, and the fence with plantings of rhododendron and/or mountain laurel so as to provide denser screening. So what they're talking about is existing plantings and additional plantings. But then the permit goes on to say, "All plantings shall be maintained in good condition insofar as—as—as possible. Plantings shall help mitigate dust and noise as well as present an attractive visual appearance." Do you see an attractive visual appearance from my perspective? Plantings shall be replaced if diseased, dying, or otherwise not in good condition. There is no tree between Thayer's fence and our property line, no planting at all, that is not covered under the special permit. Please look at the fence shown in the—in the six photographs that I have provided. The special permit includes requirements for the fence in the landscaping plan on page eight. It says, "Applicants shall install an eight-foot-high tensile steel fence, solid lock or similar, with 12-foot-long, 6-inch-square pressure-treated posts, with attached two overlapping 4-and-a-half-foot sheets of trademark soundproofing, 1-pound reinforced mass-loaded vinyl, if available or if not available, an equivalent product approved by the planning board." This is an enforceable provision. I don't see the high steel—high tensile steel fence. I don't see it in those pictures. I did not receive a notice from the planning board for a public meeting where a change would be discussed. Please note, at the bottom of the email chain, Joe's original response to me—it's just repeating what I had already said. Oh, but there is one other thing I want to say. There is a—a parking plan in the special permit. On page 10, it states that spaces 25 to 34 are for parking of equipment and vehicles when not in use. It also says that at the close of business each day, trucks and equipment will be parked either within or in front of the wood barn or within the lawn care yard or in spaces numbered 25 to 34. Josh's driveway is not included in the parking plan. The 1938 zoning bylaws state that commercial vehicles must be garaged in Residence A and AA zones. Thayer was not in compliance. Additionally, they parked the hot dog truck on the property next to Josh, visible from Forest Street, rather than in the required parking spaces. They are not in strict compliance with the parking plan and have never been because that hot dog truck has always been visible from Forest Street. Rather than enforcing the requirements, Mr. Prondak has asked the board to allow for parking of a commercial vehicle in his driveway. There is no garage at 24 Forest Street. The next thing I want to talk about is this report that perhaps you have, but I'll give you a copy.
So—when you say this report, you're referring to the report—
DeSalle Burke.
DeSalle Burke's required—
From May 29, 2019. Joe makes some observations about the drainage system, and he says that we are waiting for the engineer's report. This is really a report that anyone could do. It is not a technical review of Exhibit D of the special permit. The special permit states that the drainage plan is shown on Sheets 2 and 3 of the site plan. All drainage infrastructure shall be constructed and installed as shown on the site plan and as specified in the letter from DeSalle Burke and Associates dated 9/21/15, which is attached here too, as Appendix D. On page 18 of the special permit, it states, "There shall be strict compliance with all terms, conditions, and requirements, whether contained in subsection 3N or in this special permit." On page 2 of the special permit, it states that "Some of the requirements are specified in the subparagaphs of Section 3, Subsection N of the zoning bylaws, and insofar as any requirement is so specified, it is an enforceable requirement of this special permit. The drainage plan is required by 3N4." So the drainage plan is required, the specifications are shown in the special permit. I asked Joe Prondak to confirm that the drainage—the drainage as it exists today conforms with the specifications in the special permit, which are enforceable specifics, and he—he said he would not do that. And that's shown in this note that he sent to me. The drainage plan is extremely important to John Rowe and I. You know, we have enjoyed the lack of a river flowing through our yard every time it rains since the drainage plan was installed. But just because it's adequate the last time it rained, if we can't confirm that the measurements are consistent with the plan, it may not be adequate the next time it rains. So what we're concerned about is the next time, not the last time. And one of the measurements is that the berm has to be 18 inches high. I don't know whether it's 18 inches or 10 or 20. I have no idea. And I feel that—
Mr. Joenning, I'm just going to ask you to continue with topics that you didn't address at the last meeting, and that—that certainly was one that you mentioned at the last meeting.
Hmm, okay.
So that we can hear from others who may wish to address this tonight as well?
Hmm.
Because that was part of the public hearing and part of our record and part of what we will consider.
We're talking about strict compliance. That's—
Yeah, no, but you talked about the—the 18 inches and the—the measurement of that at our last meeting, right?
Joe also goes on to say, "If you need copies of the plans, I will forward them to you." I have never received them, and it's over a month after he committed to me that he would send them. I have appealed his ruling to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we'll see—see what they say. Marion states in her Point 9 in her letter that strict—the strict compliance standard allows no room for the exercise of good judgment by the building commissioner as to change circumstances, comparable materials, or de minimis variations. Based on my experience with the building commissioner, I could never agree to delegating more responsibility to that office and away from the planning board. His comments about checking with Thayer about plantings, for instance, indicate a lack of familiarity with the special permit and its primary objective, which is to protect the residential character of the neighborhood. On page 3, the special permit states that the permit authorizes the applicants, "Subject to appropriate terms and conditions set forth herein to operate a landscaping business." The drainage plan, including Appendix D, as an enforceable provision, the fence, the plantings, the parking plan, the lighting plan, the rules, including provisions about backup alarms, and the firewood plan, including the required rubber flooring in the dump trucks, are all part of the enforceable specifics. The current requirement is strict compliance. The new permit should not be issued because there has not been strict compliance nor has there been strict enforcement. If it is issued, it should strengthen the protections for the neighbors. At very minimum, there should be no changes at this time in either the requirements or the duration. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Joenning, you gave us a lot of information to look over and to consider, and what I'm going to suggest is that we have time to do that, including those who are on the phone who don't have the copies in front of them. And then we'll ask the applicant and Mr. Prondak, who's responsible for enforcement, to be able to respond, and then we'll have a discussion about it, okay? About the topic.
That's no fear.
Okay? All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Sorry, a couple of hands come up? Yes, go ahead. Sure.
My name is Matthew Dunn. I'm an attorney. I represent Philip Joenning and John Rowe, 23 Parkwood in Milton. I was going to speak before Mr. Joenning, but I understand why the—the planning board asked Mr. Joenning to speak first, but I'd just like to give some context. I'm not going to get into the—I think Mr. Joenning was really in the weeds as to his specific complaints against—against Thayer Nursery and their operation at the property, but I'd like to give that some context. But I first like to thank you for allowing me to—to speak to the board and—and present this information. So I've been involved in the dealings between Mr. Joenning, Mr. Rowe, and Thayer Nursery for about six years now, and it's got a—it's got a long history that—that predates my involvement. Thayer was originally operating over in the Scottswood neighborhood, running a nursery under a special permit that was issued by the ZBA back in the 1960s. Thayer was a bit of a victim of its own success, that the business grew, but the—the location of the business stayed in the same location and expanded to a landscaping business, and that grew and grew, a wood distribution business and retail, and that was all on top of the nursery business that Thayer was operating on its property. Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe started experiencing some problems at their properties—flooding, noise, light. And they brought a zoning enforcement action—this is back in 2013—to the ZBA. The ZBA found in Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe's favor and precluded Thayer from operating a commercial landscaping business on the property. That was followed up by another zoning enforcement action that was ultimately brought before the—the Zoning Board of Appeal. They had to do with the wood distribution business, and in 2014, that commercial operation was also precluded by the ZBA from operating on the premises. Both those decisions were appealed to the Norfolk Superior Court. They're pending, but Thayer had brought a—a motion to stay those decisions pending the—the outcome in court. That was denied, and the town subsequently had to bring two contempt actions against Thayer to get it to comply with the 2014 and 2013 ZBA rulings. So there's a—this is sort of the—the precursor to Mr. Joenning's concern about enforcement. In response to those ZBA decisions, in—in order to allow Thayer to resume its commercial operations on the property lawfully, it launched a—a successful campaign with Town Meeting, and it was headed by Mr. Corcoran. And the way that was presented to Town Meeting was that Thayer needed a lifeline in order to resume its operations and that it was going to be a better neighbor to—to those in the Scottswood neighborhood, and that it needed this—the zoning amendment in order to allow it—to apply for a special permit to the planning board to resume those operations, and if it obtained that, it was going to operate in harmony with the other—with the residential character of the neighborhood. Based on that, the—the Town Meeting agreed to—they voted in—in 2014—it was actually subsequently amended, I think, in 2016—to provide this—this bylaw amendment that gave Thayer this lifeline to apply for the special permit that we're sitting here for today. Now, back in 2015, 2016, I'm not sure if the same members of—the Planning Board were on that—that board then, but—
I was.
It was a very long process, and I—I think that—the—the—the members of the Planning Board were trying to—to balance out Thayer's desire to resume its operations with the concerns of the neighbors and the intent of the—of the bylaw that was passed by Town Meeting. And—and ultimately, it—it—the—the Planning Board came up with its decision in July of 2016 that requires strict compliance. And I think that was done in order to create that balance, to—to make Thayer—to put its feet to the fire, to make Thayer comply with what—what was indicated in that special permit, because only by doing that would there be the possibility of the commercial operations in the residential district being in harmony with the residential character of that neighborhood. So—based on the—the—the ZBA decision in July of 2016 and the requirements that were put forth in that, there was a series of plans, there was specifics—specific requirements with regards to drainage mitigation, landscaping, sound attenuation, it's like—Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe also had a very longstanding civil case against Thayer that stemmed from its use of the property. And we actually took the—the Planning Board's requirements and incorporated them into a settlement agreement with Thayer to resolve that—that civil case, and it was that—that Thayer would be required to implement the plans that were part of the—of the 2016 special permit and maintain those plans, maintain the site, and operate in compliance with—with those requirements. Now, almost right off the bat, we didn't get compliance—the compliance that we were looking for. There was issues with regards to—the—the big one was the drainage, and at Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe's own expense, they retained an engineer to evaluate the drainage mitigation plan that—that Thayer had attempted to implement on the property. Now, that was—in itself was only required because there was severe flooding on Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe's property that was coming from the Thayer site that was—that was unmitigated prior to the special permit and the settlement agreement. So despite the—the—the terms of the settlement agreement and the requirements for the 2016 special permit, Thayer continued to operate on the property, making some changes in fairness to Thayer—to the premises, but not—but never coming in strict compliance with the requirements, and never receiving an occupancy permit from the town in order to resume its operations. This occurred back in—in 2017. So at the time when Thayer ultimately applied for an occupancy permit, it made the same arguments that it's making to this board today, which is that it was in substantial compliance with the terms of the—of the special permit, and that was good enough. But as I spoke about previously, it—it wasn't good enough with regards to what Thayer had promised the Planning Board, what Thayer had promised Town Meeting, what Thayer had promised Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe. And so the—the terms of the settlement agreement and the—the town holding the occupancy permit over Thayer's head with regards to "We're not going to issue this until we see further compliance or more substantial compliance or strict compliance with the town—with the requirements of the special permit," is what—what brought Thayer in line. And what finally brought them in line was the fact that there was an arbitration had to be prosecuted by Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe to enforce—specifically enforce the terms of the 2000 special—2016 special permit, which are incorporated into their settlement agreement. And that cost Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe thousands— And that cost Mr. Johening and Mr. Rowe thousands and thousands of dollars, and it took months and months and months to get adjudicated. And ultimately, that was resolved in 2017, the summer of 2017, and happened to parallel the time when Thayer was able to obtain an occupancy permit for its operations. So I know that there's, Ms. McAdric has talked about, they've only been able to operate under this three-year special permit for, you know, a year and a half or whatever it is. That's something of their own making. They could, at any point, come into compliance, done what they said they were going to do back in 2015, because, you know, even to predate this, there was a prior special permit in 2015 that afforded Thayer essentially the same relief. The 2016 special permit was because of a defect in the actual bylaw itself on which the special permit was issued. So this has been on Thayer's radar screen for, you know, since 2015 at the latest, but probably predating that to sometime in 2014. So they waited until 2017 to come into relative compliance with the requirements of the July 2016 special permit. So that's something of their own making. The problem with substantial compliance is that it creates a slippery slope with regards to allowing Thayer to sort of creep up its operations in a way that it had previously done. I think that the town recognized that being a problem. I think that the Town Meeting recognized that as a problem. The zoning board of appeals certainly recognized it as a problem, and I think this board recognized it as a problem both in 2015 and 2016 when they issued those two special permits. So strict compliance is the appropriate standard to hold Thayer to at this point, based on its, you know, its history with the town, with the court, in, you know, the multiple contempt actions that have been forced, have been brought against it to get it to comply with what it's supposed to do anyways. So if that's the standard, then, you know, Thayer so far hasn't complied, hasn't strictly complied with what's required of it. I know that there was annual reports that were supposed to be filed, and Ms. McAdric correctly notes that, that one has been provided, I think it was 1718, but, you know, there's no 1617, there's no 1819. So we're asking that before Thayer be awarded further zoning relief, that it first come into compliance with what it was supposed to do in the first place. That's part one. Part two would be that, you know, if the board is inclined to grant Thayer a special permit, that it be limited to the three years that it previously issued the special permit for. And that is because there's really two parts to it. One, under the, I think, the bylaw amendment itself, and I certainly in the special permit from 2016, there talks about if there's a material violation of the requirements of the special permit, that the special permit, the planning board has the authority to revoke the permit, which I think is a stick that Thayer needs in order to comply with its requirements. And also, the three-year period is a sufficient amount of time to, for the town to reevaluate the uses that are on the property, the requirements of the special permit, and to evaluate whether Thayer has complied with what it said it's going to do and what the planning board has asked it to do. So with that, I'll stop, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. There were at least two other hands, yes? Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. Good evening. John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. I have one topic to discuss, which is really the industrial activity that goes on at Thayer Nursery and how it is in harmony with the residential neighborhood, specifically two components of that. One, Sunday operations, and two, the wood distribution business. Special permit requires that there's no Sunday landscaping work. However, it's ambiguous when it comes to nursery work and bobcats. When I read the permit, it says that there's no bobcats allowed on Sunday. However, it's, they run the bobcats all the time on Sunday. As a matter of fact, this last Sunday, June the 23rd, a bobcat ran in my backyard or behind my home from at least 10 o'clock in the morning until 3 o'clock in the afternoon, nonstop.
Excuse me, you don't literally mean in your backyard?
Yes, in my backyard, on the other side of the fence.
On Thayer's property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. And, you know, it might be helpful to this board, the last time there was a hearing, there was testimony that the bobcats only run behind my home two or three times during the month of May, and that was it. And so I'm concerned that that testimony has tainted this board, that they believe that the bobcats only run two or three times during the month of May behind my house, and that's not true. They run constantly behind my home. And another thing, I think the board, it would be good if you could hear what the bobcat noise is like. It's really loud, obnoxious. It's a diesel engine, polluting, and I just think that bobcats running on Sunday all day long behind my home and throughout the property is not in harmony with the residential So I'm asking the board if they will come to my home and listen to the bobcat noise so you get a feeling for what it's like, or go on the Thayer property and listen to bobcat noise. Now, I know Mahoney's in Winchester has all electric, all electric vehicles, and I believe that's a town ordinance, that they're not allowed to have any diesel engines on their property. I'm simply asking that we have no machinery on Sundays, and quite frankly, I'm not sure I'm quite sure that if this was happening in your backyard, it wouldn't be permitted. It is just obnoxious. And all I'm asking is that stop on Sunday, one day a week. And I don't think that's a hardship for the business. And I think that the neighbors will all agree to that. It's really, it's not necessary. And then the other topic related to harmony, you know, this type of activity being in harmony with the residential character of the neighborhood, is the wood distribution business. No other landscaper in Milton, or all other landscapers in Milton, have moved their wood distribution business offsite. We have, I think the permit allows, and Thayer has testified, to 1,000 cords of wood coming in to their property each year via tractor-trailer truck and also going out on their dump trucks. You know, so 1,000 cords of wood coming in, 1,000 cords of wood going out, the majority of which happens on the weekend. People want their wood delivered on the weekend. They don't want it delivered during the week when they're not there. And I think that from a distribution point of view, it probably would be even easier for them if they, or at least for the tractor-trailer truck coming in, to deliver the wood to an offsite location. There are tons of empty warehouses in Canton, Randolph, Avon, Avon, that would be really suitable for this type of a distribution business. So what we have is poor infrastructure that cannot support 18-wheel tractor-trailer trucks. I think they testified that there were four deliveries a week during the winter, and all of that comes in tractor-trailer trucks and goes out in dump trucks right behind my home. And these are all diesel dump trucks, polluting, noisy. It's not, it's just a business that could very easily be moved offsite, and I'm asking this board to really give this some thought, to look at what other landscapers are doing in town, and I believe everybody has moved it offsite. And I'm really asking you to have some thoughtful discussion concerning this. I don't believe that it is a hardship for Thayer Nursery to move it offsite. They had it offsite for a couple of years, and they survived. And this would give the neighborhood at least, at least three months of relief from the machinery, the pollution, the noise, the vibration. All we're asking for is three months of relief. And by moving the wood distribution offsite, that would give us three months of relief. So I'm asking you to give that a lot of thought. So Sunday operations, zero machinery, including gator. I notice in the, in the special permit, it says gator is not a noisy machine. It's a diesel-operated, like golf cart. It's not a Cushman. It's a diesel-operated golf cart that is extremely noisy. And so it might be, might be helpful to the board if you took a site visit and Thayer demonstrated these vehicles to you so you could understand how noisy they are and how much pollution comes from them, to give you a little insight as to how it's, it's, it's not in harmony with a residential neighborhood. So I just ask you to please do those things or think about it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to? Yes, Mr. Prondak.
Joe Prondak, building commissioner.
Thank you, Joe.
So I'd like to start with a couple of things in response to Mr. Johening's and Mr. Attorney Dunn's testimony. And I would just start off by saying that, yes, there has been strict enforcement and strict compliance. But to back up a little bit, Mr. Dunn brought up a point of that the town had to file two contempt charges against Thayer Nursery in order to help bring them into compliance prior to the issuance of occupancy permits under the special permit. I'd just like to state for the record that it was Joe Prondak, the building inspector, who initiated and brought those two contempt charges against Thayer Nursery. So it wasn't some outside agency, it wasn't the board of selectmen, it wasn't the town administrator, it was Joe Prondak that did that. So as far as, this entire zoning board of appeals and special permit process has been strictly monitored personally by me and strictly enforced, as well as can be under the terms of the special permit. The permanent occupancy permit, or the occupancy permit which they have now, which was issued, I believe in October of 17, maybe September, prior to that, there was a temporary occupancy permit on May 9th of 2017. Every, from the issuance of the special permit in 2016 through all of the appeals of the bylaw and the validity of the special permit, up until the point where the permanent occupancy permit was issued, all of, every action I took was taken in concert and with consultation with town council, who at the time was Lauren Galvin, working for Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, Lehane, but she has since moved on. Mr. Johening brings up points about, there were five points, actually, that he questioned. One had to do with bobcat noise, lighting, truck bed lining, a walking floor mechanism on the barn. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring the papers with me, I didn't, I didn't know to what extent we were going to be talking about things. But I made a decision, there were four, five points, I responded to those. He appealed those to the zoning board of appeals. Those issues were resolved at the zoning board of appeals. So I think it's quite unfair for him to come and now argue that those points should be reopened and reheard.
So, excuse me, Joe, those were the
The lighting?
The April, or, I'm sorry.
March 2018.
The 18, right. Okay. So that's what you had said to us at the last meeting, that those
No, no, those weren't brought up at the last meeting. Those were brought up just tonight.
They're separate, okay. So continue then.
So, and as far as the issue that was brought up at the last meeting, so the drainage structures were to be built to a certain height and a certain dimension, and they were, and they were certified by an ASBIL plan. And Mr. Johening and Mr. Dunn, I believe, were intimately involved when that ASBIL plan was completed, and everybody agreed that, yes, they had in fact at that time complied.
Can I ask a question? Who certified that? The engineer for the town or the engineer who installed it?
I don't, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but
But it was an engineer?
It was an engineer. Submitted an ASBIL plan, that plan is on record somewhere. I believe Marion's going to submit copies of it tonight because she was asked to at the last hearing. So the special permit says that you were to bill it to those height, and we, our method of certifying that upon completion was the ASBIL plan. The special permit then goes on to say you, what you do with the drainage system after that, and that's to have reports by the engineer and have maintenance logs by Thayer Nursery. It does not say to come back every year and recertify the heights. When Mr. Johening brought this up to me, I said, I said, unfortunately, it does not say that in the special permit. So I'm not going to implement, I'm not going to enforce procedures that he's requesting that aren't in the special permit. But I mentioned to him, I said, Thayer is about to come before the planning board, and you can go and ask for that to be put into the special permit. So, and I think that's where that belongs. There is no requirement within the special permit to certify the heights of the berm and the heights, the depths, the depth of the retention pond. It's simply not in there. There is a method, if you, if the planning board says, alters the special permit and says, "Get it ASBIL every year, get it ASBIL every three years," I'm happy to enforce that. But right now, it doesn't say it, and I can't.
Do we do that on any other projects?
Not to my knowledge.
Didn't they say? No.
It is a natural, it is a natural structure, so to speak. It's a grass swale with some earthen berms on either side, or maybe stone on one side and earthen on the other. So what we do is we go up and we look at it, we inspect it, and we can tell by the water path through the grass that the water is actually flowing where it's supposed to flow. And we can look at the berm, and we can see if the water has ever come up high on the berm, which it really hasn't, or if there was a breach in the berm. If some of those conditions, if an extraordinary condition occurred due to a rainstorm or something, or due to some event, then sure, we may go back and ask them to further certify something after a repair is made. But so far, none of that has happened. The drainage swale and the berm and the entire drainage structure system appear to be intact and working and working well, as was intended by the permit. And if the planning board chooses to add additional conditions, I'm happy to enforce I would like to speak for a minute to the term strict compliance. Strict compliance, if strict compliance means absolute compliance, then I would ask that the planning board take out the entire Section 10, I believe it is, in the special permit. Section 10 is a whole section that speaks of what you do if there's a, if there's a violation of the special permit, and it talks about the procedures for that. If strict compliance means absolute compliance, then the special permit should say that the if a violation occurs, then the building inspector should shut down the nursery, revoke the special permit, and let the chips fall where they may, I guess, but
So to be clear, are you suggesting that, in your view, it would be better to change strict compliance? change strict compliance, or to keep strict compliance?
I'm only stating that strict compliance is a subjective term.
So you find that enforcing something to strict compliance versus material or substantial compliance, how do you view that when you're looking at the requirements of the-
It depends on the requirements, because there are so many different. The trucks, for example, that's, that's a perfect example, where, you know, as I brought up the last time, it, it talks about when, when a truck needs to be changed out, it shall be of similar capacity. Well, similar, similar to you and similar to me, and similar to you, maybe, maybe different terms, and those are difficult things to strictly enforce.
So, for example, if a particular product is listed, and that product is no longer available, and how would you view that they need to be in compliance then? Let's just say it's what's the lining of the, the truck bed.
I, I would say that, that a typical term in construction, which I am most familiar with, is a term called "or equal." So you provide a product, a particular product, "or equal," an equal product of equal properties, equal character, equal-
So, just one more question. So on the "or equal," because that's a term too, that can be subjective depending upon what the important characteristics of the product are, though it may be "or equal" in terms of durability, or "or equal" in terms of its performance, let's say in the noise reduction capacity, or whatever its intended purpose is, right? So when you get the product "or equal," the, how do you make the judgment about whether it's equal?
You look at the manufacturer's specifications as best you can. Some, some I simply do not understand.
So if, if, if we modify, for example, a special permit to say "or equal," and if we say "or equal" in terms of noise reduction capacity, or things like that, then you might know what to look for in terms of the performance criteria? I'm just trying to, when we write, it would be helpful to know what helps you be able to enforce it.
Well, I would look at, for example, if, if, if a particular specified product said it has a density of XXX, I would look for an equal product to have a similar density.
Okay.
We would have to compare the two, the specification from the specified product to the specification from the proposed products if it was an alternative, and see if we can find similarities.
And then you would ask for enough information to give you confidence that it was an "or equal"?
I would. I would prefer not to, but I would.
Okay. Rich, do you have a question?
Just two comments.
Okay.
Well, one, with your exact example, did we not, wasn't there a denial where you had to come back and we had to change the wording to make it "as equal," because we weren't going to allow a change to the truck bed lining unless they came, we came back here and changed it?
I think Thayer, Thayer brought that back.
Okay.
Thayer did bring it back.
They did, and it worked. But I'm just saying, it worked in that case, that we had to go back and change. And so my other question would be, is why did, do we know why the term strict compliance was put in? Was there an intention there? Is that a standard term we use? Because I agree, it is confusing.
It absolutely is. And, and people can laugh and say, because, because certain people have an opinion of how, what strict compliance means, and it is, when it comes to a complex, long and complex special permit like this, there are, strict compliance is very subjective, as has been vetted out at the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, some things are easier, I suppose, to decide that are strict compliance. So if it meets the plan, and the plan requirements show a fence at a certain location, a certain height, composed of certain materials with posts, et cetera, then you can say that that was installed in compliance with that plan.
Correct.
My experience in the design and construction industry is that site conditions can be a little bit different than anticipated, depending upon, if you go to put a post in, and there's ledge there, a rock there, for some reason you can't put the post in that exact location, do we have to come back for an amendment to the special permit every time something like that happens? I think that's what I think about when I think about the word strict versus substantial. But that's something, I want to hear from what, what you think in terms of, as our enforcement officer who enforces the special permit, what makes it difficult, what language makes it difficult, and what language makes it more helpful for you, for you to be able to enforce it.
That's a question I, I couldn't respond to that in, in that quickly. That's something I would have to-
And I expect, and I actually want to ask you to come back in writing with comments too, like you did in the last letter, because I find that very helpful, for all of us to be able to consider all of the information that we're receiving. It's hard to react to all of it immediately when we, when we hear it. You know, we want to be able to read it, consider it, maybe watch the tape again. So I would ask, if you would, to put comments in writing again for us, from what you have heard this evening, and what you might, you may still hear this evening.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
And I, just a-
And I appreciate your coming to our meetings and to the hearing to hear it, the comments directly.
Yeah, so just one more issue, and that is, on the most recent inspections, the first inspection, which I believe was April 17th, where I gave a preliminary report to Mr. Johanning, that mentioned about the dead trees, and the inspection that I, and Mike Dennehy, the town administrator, was on the inspection with me, for, actually for both inspections this year. Yes, we did notice the dead trees. The issue was, and I do, of all the special permits that the planning board has issued, I probably know this one the best, because I've read it 100 times, if not 1,000 times. But despite that, I still have to, every time I go out, I have to read the whole special permit, because the chip in the brain, maybe it's not as good as it used to be, but, but there's a lot in there. So when I go to, so when I go for a site visit, I read through the special permit, I make some bullet points on a, on a notepad that I carry with me, because I'm not going to thumb through 30 or 40 pages as I'm walking around the site. And we look at, we look at certain things. So when I made the comment, well, when we did the inspection, we noticed some dead trees. An issue was brought up about whether or not some of those trees were part of the special permit, or part of the private law, private agreement. That's why that comment went into that statement. Thayer Nursery actually didn't respond to that request, they simply replaced all the trees anyway. So when we went back for the reininspection, so to speak, all the dead trees were gone. All the dead trees were replaced. So, again, I do think it's unfair that Mr. Johanning, when it clearly stated in my report that this is not the final statement, and yes, things can come up, I did go back and read the special, read that section of the special permit, where it said all plantings, I agree with them, all plantings have to be maintained, whether they were from the special permit or from the private agreement. But at that very moment, I did not know, and I simply stated what I stated, stated in my memo to Mr. Johanning, what I stated on the site. But in the end, at the final inspection, the issue of the dead trees was cured.
And so just again, I think you said this at the last meeting, but at this time, in your opinion, Thayer Nursery is in compliance?
Correct.
In strict compliance?
Yes. As, in strict compliance as intended by the special permit.
Okay.
Given the complex nature of this operation and the special permit itself.
Okay. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Prondak?
Yes, I do. This is Denny Swenson.
Hi, Denny.
Hi, Joe. I was wondering, Joe, is the fence, is that in compliance?
I believe it to be.
Okay. And Mr. Johanning mentioned swapping a van for a truck.
Yep.
In, in your estimation, is that all in compliance?
Yes, based on the language of the special permit, which I brought up at the last meeting, and one of my requests in front of this board currently is that, is that the language be clarified when it comes to switching out trucks. So Josh came to me with a proposal to switch out a van for a truck.
Oh, yes, I recall that.
It was unclear to me whether or not it was similar in size. I ended up asking for assistance from a town mechanic, which I don't want to become a regular thing. And, and the town mechanic, as best as he was able to determine based on the documentation provided, agreed that it was similar size. I did the best I could under the language of the special permit in that case.
Okay. And did you receive the information you needed from the nursery in order to enforce the permit?
Which information? There's, there's-
Any, I think relative to the, is that what you mean, Denny, all requested information?
Yeah, Mr. Johanning raised a question about that, and I just, I, he might be able to-
I would say that presently, all, all reports are in place and up to date. I think there has been a little bit of a struggle getting them submitted on time, and I think I've mentioned that.
Okay, thank you. I, Cheryl, I did have a question for Mr. Johanning if he does come back up, but I'm, I'm fine. Thank you so much, Joe.
Okay.
Can I ask a question to add on to Denny's?
Yes.
About those reports. So I thought, and I might be wrong, but I think it was Mr. Dunn that said, mentioned something about three reports and got one but missed a couple. Is that, like, was there a timeline that, like, is there a yearly report, and do we have all the yearly reports?
There are, there are two annual reports.
Two annual reports.
Required by, submitted by an engineer.
Okay.
We have one of those, which we received in January of 2019. We probably should have received that in September of 2018, because that would have been one year from the date of the issuance of the special permit. I brought that up continuously over the months of September, October, November, December, and it finally came in January. Again, what do I do? Do I, do I shut the nursery down? Do I-
Sorry, I'm so confused. So there should be two a year, starting '18, so two in '18, two in '19, or no?
There should be, there should be a, a report by an engineer that should have been submitted in September of '18. We received that in January of '19.
Okay.
And now there'd be another one due in-
September 2019.
Okay.
Due. And then there is a report that goes, not to me, to the town engineer-
Okay.
On the, on the maintenance, the operation and maintenance of the system that goes from Joshua to John Thompson. I know there was a current one submitted to John Thompson. I don't know if there's, there are previous ones.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Bill, those reports, does a copy come to you as well, to the planning department?
I have been getting them. I'm not sure if I'm on the, on the list. I do know that I get them.
Including the report that goes to John Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, board members, for Mr. Prondak?
I'm sorry, I did have one more question.
I'm sorry, Denny, one more than Kathleen?
Yes. I just, to better understand the bobcat operation on Sunday, what is the rule on that? I'm sorry, I don't have the-
I'm not sure. And I would also say that this is the first time I've heard of-
Cheryl, ma'am, I have the rule.
Can you just point us to the page for the moment?
Page 11. It says not allowed.
Page 11 of the original special permit? I don't know that we all have a copy with us. So, Denny, if you could just take note of that.
Okay.
And at our next meeting, that's all. Bill, can you distribute? I don't recall if it's in the Dropbox folder, but the, the final permit.
Yes.
And if we could all have that with us for the next meeting, so we can refer to pages? Okay, so, Denny, we can bring, have that conversation at the next meeting, if that's all right?
Thank you.
All right, Kathleen?
My question was, was actually related to the fact that it seems like there's some questionable language in the original special permit that we should think about fixing for this one. And I know that Joe, Mr. Prondak, had made a couple of suggestions, but if there's sort of more, I'd like to see some, you know, I'd like to see some thought to us looking at, if we renew the special permit, fixing those areas where there seems to be some fuzziness, or maybe the language is too, too tough to deal with, or not reasonable enough to deal with.
So you're, you're requesting that Joe think about any other aspects of the report that he would like to have the language reconsidered?
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually think I did that.
Okay.
My, my biggest concerns were addressed in my first letter to the board from the last hearing.
Any other questions, board members, for Mr. Prondak?
I know we got those letters, but are they in the Dropbox too? Do you know that letter?
With Lauren's departure, I think Julia will now be uploading, she uploaded some documents. I'm not sure if they're all there, but we can ask to make sure that she does put them in. The Dropbox folder is just our internal document warehouse, so that we can access it from any place on our electronic device.
That's why I look at my phone every once in a while. It's not because I'm looking at my texts.
I'm looking at Dropbox stuff.
But it means that when we're on a call, we can access the documents, and we're all, we can access them on our devices. So it's, all right, so, and otherwise, normally, the special permit application documents are on the town's website. So it's, again, that was something Lauren had been doing, so-
It were. I'm not sure which the latest ones that are up here.
So I'll request, Bill, that somehow between you and Julia, we get them uploaded, okay?
Yes.
All right. I guess if no other questions from the board for Mr. Prondak, likely we'll be continuing. And also, we're going to, as we've discussed, request you put in writing any other comments, even the comments you gave to us tonight.
Sure, sure. I'll summarize those.
Okay, yeah. All right, great.
I may not stay much longer, though I have another engagement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here would like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
I'll make it, I'll make it short.
Thank you for, for coming.
Sure. Tina Tevens, 39 Parkwood Drive. And we're directly behind their nursery, and if you're looking at Phil and John's house, we're the house to the left. So we're directly above the property. We've lived there for 27 years, so we have a lot of history, and I'm not going to reiterate everything, because we'd be here all night. But I think the biggest thing for us is we don't want to support the extension. We feel the three-year keeps everybody in compliance. It's a good checkmark.
You mean extension of, to five years, you mean?
To five years. Keep it at the three. We just feel it's a good, it's a good benchmark. It's a good checkmark. The special permit definitely has helped. And it's nice to have a meeting like this where there's a check and a balance. So we just want to keep that check and balance, and 100% support the Sunday hours of operation. Even if we could strike a balance, that say, May, June, July, maybe hours of operation, maybe they got nine to 12, and we could enjoy our property from 12 on. But just something where we could strike a balance on Sunday would be awesome.
You want to revisit the Sunday hours?
It would be, I mean, it's supposed to not happen. My understanding was it was supposed to not happen, but as John said, I mean, it was this past Sunday, nonstop. So, you know, we understand where we live. We've been there for 27 years. We know what we have. We don't want this to be a contentious relationship, so just where we can strike a balance would be nice. All right, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have a pen that could borrow, please? I just ran away.
And we want you to take notes.
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to us? Okay. Mr. Johanning, you want to add to what you said?
Yes.
And I think Denny had a question for you, so.
I thought was basically, I was wondering if, if, if Mr. Johanning, you know, the documents and visuals that he handed out, did he summarize all the points? I'm at a disadvantage, because I can't see them, but I gather from Cheryl's comments that we won't be voting until next time anyway, so, but I did want to hear if he had covered all of his points.
Okay, well, we, in terms of having things in writing covering all of his points, I'm not quite sure, so-
I have something.
He has some notes he's working off of, so if he can provide those to us, Denny, then, then we can all have them for our next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Bill had a, you wanted, before Mr. Johanning, you had your pencil up. Did you want?
No, I was-
Oh, you were pointing to Rich. Oh, okay, Rich, sorry, you have?
No, 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 no.
Okay. All right. So-
Sign language across the table.
Okay. Mr. Johanning?
I'm just a little disturbed by what Joe was saying. You know, we got sidetracked onto vehicles, but a truck and a van are not the same, and vans are still available. So I- So I'm not sure how a truck becomes a van. Anyone can buy a van. I could buy a van. So a van is a van, and a truck is a truck. Um, so I'm not sure where the confusion comes.
So we've already heard that he would like clarity, better clarity from us on dealing with trucks, and I think it's something that we will discuss.
I'm completely opposed to the idea that Marion proposed, which was to add up the gross weights of all the trucks and say, okay, as long as you have, I don't remember the number of vehicles, seven vehicles, and they add up to this gross weight, you can do anything inside that. That just cannot be. You know, maybe he buys an 18-wheeler and five scooters. Is that, is that good? No, it's not good. I, I think, you know, there was a certain amount of, you know, uh, not really being factual on Joe's part. And, and that's why I'm not sure that a lot of deference needs to be extended.
Mr. Joe Henning, rather than have a back and, uh, too much back and forth on this one, we haven't had a chance to read through everything, and we don't all have our special permits here tonight. I'd like us to take note of the things, and I, and I recognize that there's going to be disagreements amongst the people who've come forward. But your very specific comments, we can't really comment on yet without being able to-
But it is a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
And I am a member of the public, right?
Yeah, but I, I would like you to give them-
I have been recognized by the chair, right?
And I am the chair, and I'm asking you to give the board the opportunity to read through what you've provided us and to read through what Mr. Prondak provided us.
That's fine, but all I want to say is there needs to be accuracy. And, um, one of the things that he says on his April 17th email is, "The required trees along Parkwood Drive abutting properties appear to be healthy." And then I presented him with pictures, and he goes, "We certainly did see dead trees." That isn't in his email of April 17th. It isn't in there. He didn't say he saw dead trees. He said, "The required trees along Parkwood Drive abutting properties appear to be healthy."
So what's important now is that the trees are there, they're healthy, and that-
No, what's important is we have to be accurate, and he says one thing to one party and another thing to another party.
I can't have this back and forth between the two of you, coming back up and saying he said, she said, without having the-
Read his email. That's what I presented to you.
Written record for us to review, and then we can come back and ask questions.
Read the email that I presented.
We can't do that and run the meeting at the same time, and I'm sorry. But we will, and we will definitely have this conversation when we're all more familiar with the contents of all the documents, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, should I ask a question, Cheryl?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, tired from listening. Um, I was wondering if Mr. Joe Henning, if the plan board allows and encourages future vehicles be electric, won't that be beneficial for the neighborhood, especially the abutting, as opposed to diesel vehicles?
Are they proposing to buy them? Are they saying they're going to buy them? Or is this just some kind of a discussion we're having that's some kind of, you know?
It's not like that's what the new language that Marion is proposing is about. That's the intention.
If, if my memory serves me, I, I think, you know, there was some discussion last meeting about whether the hours of operation could be extended if the vehicles were electric. And I guess I'd say, I encourage electric vehicles, number one, but number two, if it means that the hours of operation are altered, I say no. And the reason why I say no is it's a benefit to us, yes, but it's an industrial operation, really. And, and the main thing that you have to achieve in the special permit is you have to protect the neighbors, so that the industrial use is in harmony with the neighborhood. And with things like bobcats operating on Sundays, it's not in harmony. Um, so I'm simply saying, yes to electric vehicles, we encourage them, no to any extension of hours of operation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, Mr. Dunn?
I'll be very, and this is just to address the chairwoman's concern about getting familiar with the documents. I just want to give you guys a site with regards to reporting requirements. Um, the first one with the-
Please, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, just go ahead, have a seat, so the microphone picks you up. Yeah.
So with regards to drainage, the reporting requirements are found on page seven of the July 2016 special permit, paragraph 4D3. Um, and then with regards to the other requirements, um, uh, that concern, an employee list, a log of materials, records establishing that snow and ice removal operations, um, the, the annual report of the, of the drainage plan, and the current vehicle list. Those requirements are found on page 24, paragraph 10D of the July 2016 special permit.
And then Mr. Rowe was citing, I think it was page 11 for bobcats. Can you just give me, give us that, too?
Yeah, yep. There's a, um, there's a chart, um, that identifies, um, this is a list of business, business activities. That is found, it's paragraph 4I, and that's on page 11 of the July 2016 special permit.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, and the purpose for that, just to go back to sort of the source document, which is the bylaw amendment, is to limit the, the size in, um, of the commercial operations on that site to the 2012 levels of operation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Prondak, I know you were going to come comment again, but if, okay, since I've given others a, a second time up, I'll give you your chance as well.
Um, I did, I'm sorry, I can't tell what's going on, but I, I did have one last question for, um, Mr. Prondak, if he is coming up again.
He is, he is. He's here now, Denny, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, um, Mr. Joe Henning raised a question about parking of, uh, a commercial vehicle on 24 Forest Street. I was wondering if, if they've been in compliance with that.
So Josh, Joshua has had a, a pickup truck, which has been both his commercial truck and personal truck for, for as long as I can remember, has always parked at 24 Forest, so we never really considered that one that had to park in the landcare yard. Now that Josh has, is switching out that truck, or is proposing to switch out that truck, um, I, I want, I, I would, I asked, I had asked the board in my last, my last, um, presentation that they consider addressing that specifically.
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for that information.
Uh, so my comment as to Mr. Joe Henning's, um, uh, comment on the trees. When I said in my email, the required trees, there were, and I don't remember off the top of my head, along the, along the Cashman property, there were 13 required trees, and along the Parkwood, uh, property, uh, Parkwood Drive property, not just Mr. Joe Henning's, but all the way down to the Coles property, all the way up, there were, I believe, I want to say 14 required trees. And I had looked at that requirement in the special permit before I went up there. And when I talked about the required trees, I looked at those, those specific trees, not all of the plantings. When I said the required trees, I was mentioning the required trees specifically required by the special permit. Yes, the other trees were still outstanding. It was an incomplete report. I told him that, and they were addressed.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Another, sort of a last chance. Anybody else wish to come up and address the board? Okay, I do want to, um, make note that, um, at the last meeting, I mentioned we had received an email, which I read, uh, from, uh, Michelle Garvin and Mary Beckman. Since then, we, I received, and I think I asked it to be forwarded to the other members of the board, an email from Jason Benzacken, and I hope I pronounced that correctly. It is, um, several paragraphs long, but I'll go ahead and, and read it for the record. Chairwoman Taggias, my name is Jason Benzacken. I live at 417 Hillside Street, and I'm the president of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. I am writing in support for the Thayer Nursery special permit that is on tonight's agenda. I was present for the meeting on June 12th and had intended to speak in person in support of the permit then, but as this agenda item was continued, I had to defer my statements. I am, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to a work deadline, and respectfully request that this statement be placed on the record. I hope my presence, my presence at the last meeting demonstrates that my inability to attend tonight's meeting is not due to lack of effort to speak with you in person. I first write in support of the special permit on behalf of myself and my wife and children as residents of the neighborhood. Many of the members of the Oldfield family who operate Thayer Nursery live in our neighborhood. Their family and their business offer a wonderful presence in the community. Thayer Nursery feels like the center of the neighborhood, and both the nature of the business and its aesthetics complement the unique feel of this neighborhood. Given that many members of the Oldfield family live in the neighborhood, they appear to me to run their business in manner with full consideration of the impact their business has on the neighborhood residents. I also write in my capacity as president of the HNA, the Hillside Neighborhood Association. And while I clearly do not speak on behalf of all neighborhood residents, given the objections made at the prior hearing or at this hearing, the HNA supports the special permit, although the HNA takes no position on the issues raised by Inspector Prondak. Thayer Nursery has allowed its property to be used for large community gatherings on many occasions, such as events around Easter or Christmas, and to host large neighborhood meetings. Members of the Oldfield family have been involved in the HNA and worked for the betterment of our neighborhood, and when the HNA and Traffic Committee worked with the town to change traffic rules that were necessary to mitigate dangerous road conditions, Thayer Nursery did not oppose or work against neighborhood efforts despite the negative impacts the new traffic rules were going to have on their business. Thayer Nursery should be issued a permit that allows, that allows it to thrive as a business. Denying the special permit or otherwise placing conditions that would prevent Thayer Nursery from thriving would be an injury to our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Jason Benzacken. And I received this on Tuesday, June 25th.
Um, yes, uh, this is, um, Denny Swenson. Um, I, I do have a 23B3 disclosure. Um, I belong to an organization called the Milton Neighborhood Coalition, as does Jason Benzacken. So fortunately, I wanted to mention that, and, um, to state that I believe that I can be objective, um, even though I, I, I do know of Jason outside of the plan board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Denny. Bill, have you received any other letters or emails regarding this matter?
Just those two.
Just those two, okay. So, um, we, I know, Marion, you had prepared a response to the, some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. Uh, did you want to review those tonight? Or did you want to have a comprehensive review of the comments that have been received, both at this meeting and that meeting?
Well, given the time, and that I'm here for another matter as well, I'm willing to consolidate. The board and the public has access to the letter that I already wrote to the board, responding to the comments from the last meeting. And, um, there are additional comments at this meeting, and I've tried to take careful notes. Um, there were just a couple of things I thought, um, I would give the board tonight to add for your consideration. Since we have been talking about gross vehicle weights as another measure of equivalency of vehicles, I had, um, Thayer Nursery prepare their list of trucks, and I have it here somewhere, copies for you, with gross vehicle weights for each truck, so that you could, and, and I did a total, so you can see. Here it is. You can just pass these around. I took their existing report. I had Thayer Nursery provide me with a gross vehicle weight for each truck, and then, you know, you can just take a look at it. So that, you know, that's just an example of the way this report would be laid out. And, and by the way, I call this a report, Thayer Nursery in their permit is obligated to have on hand and keep records about each vehicle, including all of the trucks, which means that at any given time, the building commissioner or somebody should, you know, or a request could be made to see the list of trucks, which is documenting what trucks they have on site. So they don't, for the trucks, they don't do, I think I may have described it as an annual report, but it's not an annual report. It's an ongoing reporting requirement, and that list is supposed to be available, and it is. And so the second part of truck, um, regulation is that if a new truck is purchased, the building commissioner has to agree that it's equivalent to a truck being taken out of service. So any new truck that's purchased should have been approved by the building commissioner, and then it should be shown on the list. So theoretically, if Thayer were to go out and just buy a truck and put it on their list, or not put it on the list, when the, when the building commissioner comes and looks at the trucks on site and reviews the list, he would see a truck that he's never approved. So that's the purpose of the report. The gross vehicle weight measure is just a suggest, it's a, it's an idea that Mr. Prondak put forward. I thought you'd want to look at it. Um, I have copies of the, um, well, I've, I've looked to see where the records are for the maintenance logs, because that's a drainage, um, monitoring function. Um, they are, they're available in the, in the landscaping office at Thayer. Um, they've been given to the building commissioner. They've been given to the town engineer. I have copies of them here as well. But they're available, and anyone wants to look at them can look at them. The logs basically just say, you know, I fixed the grass on this date, or I did that on that date. It's supposed to show what maintenance was necessary. Um, then a fair amount of work was done, you know, this spring in response, basically to Thayer's own view of how the, how everything was working. And I believe it's in, the drainage is really, it's in excellent condition, you know. I mean, I told you before, it's been hard to keep the grass viable in the drainage channel, so it's been replaced again, and that's just an ongoing maintenance function. Um, I don't have other new material, other than what I put in my letter. I think it probably makes sense to consolidate everything if you're, I assume you're going to continue this.
Marion, you said you had site plan, the as-built site plan, right?
And, I'm sorry, the main thing was, at the last hearing, I sent electronic copies, but there's a large copy here, one for each member of the planning board to keep in their file. For now, it's much easier to look at a large copy, although you can enlarge the electronic copy as well. Uh, again, that, those will be available. This is the, this is the as-built site plan that was the, was the last step, basically, to getting a final occupancy permit, and this site plan was, you know, worked on and revised, and a neighbors engineer also reviewed the site plan, so there was quite a bit of back and forth and review that went into this. The preparation of the site plan is by De Selberg Engineering. They are the engineers for this project. They've also provided the report on how the system is operating at the end of the first year, and they will be providing a report in September 2019 about how it's operating. And, um, so that's how, that's how the special permit, that's the reporting requirement in the special permit right now. So that, I, I'm not going to try to address every remark, as you've suggested. I need to review my notes. Um, I, I certainly will have responses. I appreciate the board's willingness to give me some more time to do that.
Okay, great. So, um, then I would suggest that we continue this hearing. Um, and I will take a motion from one of my board members to do that. It would be to-
I would make a motion to continue the hearing.
So it would be to July 25th, and Bill, do we-
July 25th.
And do we have a time specific, Bill? You want to say 7:15? Okay, so we have a motion to continue this hearing, okay? We have a second. All of those in favor? Again, roll call. Cheryl Taggias, yes? Rich?
Ashley Miller, yes.
April Anderson Lamoreau, yes.
Denny?
Denny Swenson, yes.
Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, yes.
Okay, it's continued. Thank you. We will now go to our old business, the Pulte Affordable Unit Discussion.
Thank you very much. I'm Reed Blute with Pulte Homes. And this evening, I also have Marion McHidrick here. And since our last meeting, and some of the questions and that have risen since that last meeting, I engaged Marion to assist us in hopefully getting the metaphorical football over the goal line. So I'm here for questions and then any other discussion, and maybe I'll hand it off to Marion, since she had prepared a letter that she previously submitted to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Blute. Denny or Kathleen, did you want to say something there?
What?
No, I'm sorry. I thought I heard some electronic noise, but okay. Marion, please.
All right, thank you. I'm Marion McHidrick. It is correct.
Not for me.
Okay. So I was contacted by Reed Blute just last week, and this problem was explained to me, and I have agreed to work for Pulte Homes to help them with resolution of this particular bump that has occurred in their permit. So I think the board is, in some ways, more familiar than I am with, in your last meeting, I think you had some considerable discussion. But as I understand it, and as my letter describes it, the situation is that Pulte Homes has a special permit for a cluster development, and that special permit has conditions relating to affordable housing. There were three options in the special permit. One was to convey, to make available two lots for affordable house that would be eligible for inclusion on the SHI, not to create the house, but to make the lots available. Second option was to use some of the remaining Governor Stoughton land to create affordable homeownership units. I believe that that one was also homeownership. Third option was to create off-site two home ownership affordable units that would be counted on the SHI. And that language, countable on the SHI, is in the zoning. It's also in some of our other special perm, our other overlay zoning that has an affordable housing requirement. It means that the housing that's created has to count towards the town's requirement for affordable housing under state law. Then, and I think this is quite, it is unforeseen what has happened, which is that after the permit was issued, after Pulte came back to the Milton Planning Board, presented its plan, which was to be for two units that would should be created from a two-family home in the East Milton area that Pulte has under agreement, and that those would be renovated and then create affordable condominiums would be sold at the required, you know, affordable price for eighty, eighty percent of the AMI, the standards that are established by Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm not sure who initially received this information, but Department of Housing and Community Development officials then came back and told the town, Pulte, that they would not accept for inclusion on the SHI to such small, such a small condominium development of two units in one building. This is not in the regulations. This is not in the guidelines. So there's really no way that the town could have known this, or that Pulte could have known it. So what's happened is you've issued a special permit with a condition that is impossible. Now, if you had months and months, you could go back and try to appeal, you know, the decision from DHCD, you know. You don't have months and months. And this is a ruling from the agency based on their own mission, which they're responsible for trying to provide adequate housing for people in Massachusetts who need it desperately. They take their mission very seriously. They've had, they feel that there are too many problems with these very small condominium units when they're made affordable, when they are created as affordable units. So their ruling is they will not include it on the SHI. They want, they want to deter you from creating that type of unit. So what I did was, after getting some background, I contacted the two officials at Department of Housing and Community Development. Alana Murphy is one of them, Ray Koheiashi is the other one. Ray Ko is in charge of the marketing procedures, and Alana is a deputy director at DHCD. And I wrote a letter to them saying that we have this problem, and one possible solution that I believe you should approve would be, instead of creating homeownership units, instead of creating condominiums, Pulte Homes would purchase the property and then would convey it back to the town, and would have to be to the Affordable Housing Trust in order to happen immediately, because the Affordable Housing Trust can accept conveyance of property. Otherwise, you'd have to go through a town meeting vote to take it. And then the property would be subjected to the appropriate restrictive agreement and marketing agreement for rental units. So it would have to be rental units. In quick summary, that's what I proposed to DHCD, and I've given you copies of my letter. So what happened then was, this was just last week, so it's pretty hard to get an answer that quickly, but this is an urgent situation. I followed up with emails and a phone call, and I spoke several times to Alana Murphy last Friday, and she spoke several times to other officials at DHCD. So this has gone through quite a process of discussion. And DHCD at Alana Murphy came back to me late on Friday afternoon and said, we will indeed accept such an affordable unit. It would go on the SHI. And we both understood, because I've done this in other instances, you know, what the regulatory agreement is and what the marketing agreement is. They're always subject to those, and the condominium units would have been as well. So she sent me an email back, and I gave you a copy, because we both regard that as a written documentation that they have said that they will accept this type of unit for inclusion. The problem now, of course, is you're the planning board, and you have to decide, first of all, whether it will be acceptable to you for this, will this fulfill the affordable housing requirement for Pulte? And because your permit, your special permit is written saying only homeownership units, I believe you have to amend it. And so whatever the procedure should be for such an amendment. But here's the situation. Pulte has this property under agreement. The closing was originally to be Friday, is that correct? Originally talked about as being tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes, yeah.
And it's been postponed several times, because it's just taken a long time to get through this process. And he's not, Pulte Homes isn't going to be able to do this unless they purchase the property. It's not going to happen tomorrow. They've had, they have, I guess, somewhat of an extension. I really need to get a sense from the planning board. I understand that you can't vote. You can't vote on an amendment without the proper procedure for doing that, whether you decide this is minor or significant. Significant irregular amendment requires a hearing, so you have to, you have to schedule it, and you have to advertise it. I do need to get a sense from you of whether this sounds like a good plan to you. I do want you to know that I sent copies of my letter to the member of the board, the selectman, who's on the Affordable Housing Trust, and she said that she would send it to the chairman. It was too late to be on their agenda. They met on Monday. There was some talk that maybe they would come to this meeting. I can tell you that I have, I've let them know that I'm working on this option, and so I think you can get feedback from them pretty easily. I think if there were, I can't speak for them.
I think, I'm sorry, Mary. I think Bill can give us some feedback, but also I do, I did get word from Melinda Collins that neither she nor Julie Creamer were available to come to our meeting tonight. So they were aware of it, but unavailable. But Bill has some feedback, I believe.
I did attend the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, joint meeting with the Housing Committee that took place on Monday, the 24th. Some of the questions that came up, or you're right, it was not on their agenda, but they knew the issue was, was there, and they do have questions about it. Who manages, who manages the process? Who lives there? Who pays the taxes? Who pays the building's insurance? Who monitors the long-term affordability compliance? And that's enough with it. I mean, if it goes to the Affordable Housing Trust, does it go to the housing authority? What is the mechanism that makes this happen? There has to be a discussion with those parties jointly, and those have not taken place at this point.
Yeah, I can, I can give you some general idea of information for all of those, but of course, there needs to be discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust. In terms of the direct management of the rental properties, they may choose to go to the Milton Housing Authority and have them provide some of the management, since they manage other housing units. They may choose to set up an independent way of doing that.
Excuse me for one minute. Would these be the first units that the Affordable Housing Trust are responsible for?
Well, they would receive title to these units.
And they don't have title to any other units?
Not yet. They don't have enough money to buy one, I don't think.
No, they don't, they don't own anything, but they, we do have a declaration of trust that's on record, so they're in a position to take title, but this would be the first time they would have ever done that.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Mary.
In terms of, you know, first of all, the taxes are calculated based on the affordable, the fact that these are affordable, these are going to be perpetually restricted as affordable units. So that, that changes the value of the property for tax purposes, and the taxes are calculated, and they're required to be calculated by the assessors based on that. There's case law on everything. The town pays the taxes, the direct payment, well, I don't-
Sorry, don't interrupt, but on your left.
Actually, I don't, I don't want to get into too much detail on that, because I don't know all the specifics, but I can tell you that the price, the rental price is calculated taking into account whatever factors a renter might have to assume as part of their rent. So normally, if you're renting an apartment, sometimes some of these costs are written into the rent that you pay. But the affordable rent can only be so much, so you have to calculate what the rent can be based on all, everything that goes into it. It's not, that's what's determined when you write, when the, when you prepare, what a regulatory agreement, which is going to reference the special permit that the town issues, requiring that these units be created, as well as any other information that the, that the, that Housing Trust wants written into it. The deed that would be written conveying the property would contain conditions that Pulte would put in the deed, requiring that these two units be permanently restricted as affordable units. I don't know all the details yet, because we haven't worked them out. But that would be the form of the transfer of ownership. It would be, it would be given to the town, but there would be restrictions, because this has to fulfill their requirement. So, so the units have to be managed so that they will be perpetually affordable. The monitoring is, would be, would become the responsibility of the town, and that's all I can tell you right now, because none of these details have been worked out yet.
But the monitoring bill, for example, the units at Woodmere, they have to be monitored.
They're monitored by, it's built into the, I know it's a long term that goes through Metro West Consortium for that.
They basically have a consultant.
Yes, yeah. My next answer is going to be in the, the experiences I have had with these developments is that usually it's a consultant that provides a service, because they know exactly how to do it, and usually the monitoring isn't done, I mean, a housing authority in theory can assume that responsibility, but our housing authority doesn't right now, so it would be a consultant, and it's part of the management of the property.
Actually, for Central, it was South Shore Housing Collaborative that did it.
Okay.
Rich, you had a question?
Oh, she answered it.
Okay. I'll just note that we spoke about the, this idea at our last meeting. In fact, Kathleen raised it, and we did have consensus that we felt it was a good approach. And the fact that we didn't know at the time how DHCD would view it, but now, from what you said, DHCD views it favorably. So there's, I think, two things in my mind. One is that the housing authority probably has to take a vote to be amenable to accept it, and-
You mean the trust or the housing?
I'm sorry, the trust. The trust, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Either or, you could have either one.
Either or, okay. Thank you, Kathleen.
When you're, I just want to make a comment afterward.
Okay. And then the second thing is that if, even if we give direction tonight, I think we should have a public hearing, which we advertised, and this, the special permit does allow for a two-family, in the language of the special permit. The, the two things that would be different would be the size, which we've, we discussed previously, size of one of the units. And then the second, the second would be the ownership versus the rental. So that, those are my sort of two, sort of general comments that we can, this is consistent with what we talked about, being supportive of at our last meeting, and then we can give direction, but that if we choose, we need to get the feedback from either the housing authority or the Affordable Housing Trust before we can actually take the final vote on it. That's my thought.
I have to ask this question, and I'm hoping Kathleen O'Donnell will be able to answer it, but is it your understanding that the housing authority can accept title to the property, or would that be to the town and have to go through town meeting? I know through the, to the-
What I would, yeah, I mean, the housing authority is a separate entity-
Yeah, it is.
-from the town.
Yeah.
So it may be that it doesn't need a town, doesn't need a town meeting vote to check, but I'd have to check the statute on housing authority.
Yeah, and I'm working with something in another town right now. It's, I think you may be right, that it doesn't have to go through the town, but I think that needs to be determined.
It's their board.
Yeah, but the other thing is that we could also, we can have title go to the Housing Trust, and they could have the Housing Authority manage the problem. You know, when you do regulatory agreements, you do have the situation where you've got a regulatory agreement, you've got the owner, and then you can have a managing, you know, entity in there, and that could be the Housing Authority.
Right. That's right, you could. I like to hear from the, I hope we'll get feedback from the trust, because I want to know what they really are interested in doing. This is the first opportunity they've had, are they interested in being more involved in monitoring, you know, in knowing what happens with the property? They may be. I mean, it seems to me kind of central to the role that they have, but-
Rich, you had?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Just a few things for the record. So I did, I am on the Housing, Select Board's Housing Committee member, but I was on vacation last week, so I did miss the meeting. Positive that I could, good for me, though, that I can ask questions here, and so I didn't have to be at that meeting. But my comments for the record are, like, so in our last meeting, we were doing a lot of brainstorming on the fly, and so we were thinking very much out loud. I definitely was interested in hearing what the outcome of this is, so this is interesting to me. I will say, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to stop the process than moving forward, but I will say that I'm surprised by the outcome, because, and I don't, I'm not, don't know how the DHC, how they look at things, but in my opinion, their, or one of their frustrations was, is it didn't match what was being built, right? And so, but, and if you look at just what's being built, it's homeownership, it's very large homeownership. And what we were looking to do was make it very small homeownership. And now, if we take that same property and make it rental, it somehow is okay. I, I do think, I don't agree with that. If the board, though, is interested in moving forward to just make, you know, to get us there, so that we have more rental property and it's on that list, I, you know, I will take, you know, I'll go for the ride and make sure that I'm good with what we come up with, but I don't think it's a great option. I mean, it just, if you go back to what was supposed to happen is, and I wasn't part of this, and that's the other reason why I'm not looking to debate the original, is in my opinion, it's, what are you building? Well, you should be making two properties, something like that, and if that's what their, their pause was, I'm really surprised that they're okay with residential, which means that all they really cared about was that it, it's hard to manage. And it wasn't, we had somebody in here that was really irritated that we were going to take something like this and turn it into, you know, change this into, and use these two properties. I'm curious, are they happy now? Would they now happy, be happy because it's rental? Or would they still be upset because it's two inferior units compared to what's being built? Again, I'm not looking to rehash the whole thing, but I am curious in what the rest of the board thinks.
Well, I mean, I think in thinking about how we try and include, inclusion- Well, I mean, I think, in thinking about how we try and include inclusionary, you know, inclusionary zoning in subdivisions, it is something that needs some further consideration. Because delivering lots that don't have a means to get an affordable unit built on it, how does that really work to deliver affordable units? And then, how does that really work with a development where it's required to be done by another party, when they have to, it has to be delivered sometime while they're ongoing with their construction? So it kind of complicates things.
Laws that we have to play in.
So I think it is something that we need to consider as we think about the cluster bylaw and what it requires. And the other of our bylaws where we're asking for, I mean, it's different if it's a development where they're actually providing the units. And then, like Woodmere, where they're provided on-site. Or a multifamily, where they can be part of the other units, which is a much easier way to actually get the units and get the 10%. I think this, doing it in the subdivisions, this has proven here why it's complex. And having been on the board at the time that this special permit was considered and granted, there were options given, recognizing that it might be difficult, one of these options, or one or more of these options, might be difficult to do. And the goal is to get affordable units. I mean, that's what we were, the board was trying to do. And giving the option of having town farm, but not having town farm be a part of the parcel that's being considered, you know, it's out, it's a sort of another third party that's sort of out of control. So it is a little bit of, I think it's, this is demonstrating for us, and we didn't anticipate that, certainly didn't anticipate that DHCD wouldn't approve a two-family offsite, because we wouldn't have put it into special permit if we.
But just a small thing. So when I, when, last time we spoke, the reason why I, the thought I had of amending the language, in my opinion, it kind of went with what the original law stated. Nowhere in there, though, it says, "or rental." And I'm curious at why, if you guys were, if you were part of it, were you thinking, hey, this could have been, this could be a rental opportunity? Or were you thinking, no, these should substantially look kind of like, or be somewhat like, what we're building?
I mean, I can tell you what my thoughts were. At no time did I think that we were going to produce a 3,000-square-foot house, like you're probably building, or 3,500, or whatever. So I didn't think it was going to be like that. I honestly, I don't think, I don't recall spending a lot of time talking about homeownership versus rental.
I don't recall.
But it's in there.
It is in there.
It is in there, yeah. But I just don't recall the discussion about it. So I don't know that we spent a lot of time thinking about it. So I don't, I can't even recall where that came from. I don't know if it was recommended, or, I don't know. But I just want to state for the record, I was not here last time. But I definitely support this approach. I'm thrilled to hear that you're working with Alana. She's a very talented woman. She hasn't put anything in writing, that she doesn't stand by and feel as though it would be approved. So an email versus a letter from the secretary, or whatever, makes no difference. And I would encourage you to push ahead with the caveat that that's assuming that the Affordable Housing Trust is willing and able to take an active role, and accept the property, and do whatever they need to do to make sure these are on the SHI. Personally, I want to see as many units added to the SHI as possible. So even if it's only two, and even if it's rental and not homeownership, I still think it's better than nothing, so.
Yeah. Again, that's why I don't, I'm not, I'm not going to push forward. But again, my statements are more for the record. I am on that other committee, and the way I look at things is, and this is, I'm just looking at it from, I do agree, there needs to be more affordable. But I do think it's, there should be a lot more affordable housing to be purchased as well. In this town, there's not a lot, and it's not, it's not easy to come by. A little easier to come by some rental affordable than it is, like, houses.
Oh, really hard to come by.
It's impossible to find affordable housing like that to buy. And if that was what the spirit of that law was, I just, I take pause in trying to change it so drastically.
I will note that Milton's SHI inventory is primarily age-restricted. And so it is something where you might say, there's a lot of rental units, but they're not rental to anybody under 55.
Something to think about next time these come around. We should be very specific then, so that this type of thing doesn't happen.
Okay. So Denny or Kathleen, would you like to add to the conversation, discussion?
Well, I mean, this Kathleen, because, I mean, one of the sources of this idea was me, to try to figure out some way to get this to work. And going back to the original language in this zoning, you know, for the, or the special permit for this project, it's trouble all over the place. Because it's, as was pointed out, it mentions the town farm, which of course is not even owned by Pulte, so how is that going to work? And it also says, in the worst case, they just can write a check. But it doesn't talk about how you calculate that. So it's kind of like this standard sort of inclusionary zoning language, that nobody's ever thought about how you were actually going to implement it. It also says two lots, not two homes. It's the lot. So you'd be setting aside two lots, and then trying to find somebody to build the affordable housing on it. So I think it was drafted with folks from someplace else, and nobody thought about how it was actually going to work. So, and can't figure out the money, because there's no formula in there. And so I think this rental idea, you know, I have to say, is a pretty sweet thing. And I thank Marion McCetrick for reaching out to DHCD to get something from them, because they did agree to it. Because their decision wasn't anything you could appeal. There's no process to appeal of this regulatory sort of language. They don't have any, they're not looking at any law, and any bylaw, and anything. That was just their, that's their policy, and that's what they, you know, there's nothing to appeal. They just say they won't approve it, they don't approve it. So.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
I think we should, I support it.
All right. And Denny? Is Denny still with us?
She might be on mute.
Yeah, she might be on mute, because she is listening.
All right, is there anybody?
She's going to.
Chicken, chicken pipe in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had the mute button on. I'm sorry. This is Denny. I'm sorry, I had the mute button on. I was wondering why nobody was listening. The way that I read the special permit, the developer has four options. And the special permit having that many options was, I think, a good and flexible aspect of the permit. The fact that it was almost geared toward two land lots. The cluster zoning lots that are restricted are of lesser value. Because I came out of the last meeting wondering, trying to understand those figures. So I went back, and I actually asked Alex Whiteside, which I would recommend any other planning board member do, because I had a better understanding of how thoughtful the language actually was. So when you look at the two-units-offsite option, I reread it, and it really states that the requirement is on the developer to come up with two units offsite that would be acceptable to the state agency and counted in the Affordable Housing count. So, but we discussed in our last meeting how difficult that would be, but it's still on them. So I am grateful we're not going to vote on it tonight. I do agree with Cheryl that we should have the public posting. I am interested in hearing from Milton's Affordable Housing Trust. And I'm also maybe interested in hearing from someone like Mike Dennehy, or someone on behalf of the town, because I think there are questions that have come up tonight, you know, and I think Kathleen might have raised some of them last time. You know, is it good for the town to oversee apartment rentals? Is the town equipped to do property management? You know, what if tenants don't get along? Does the town get pulled into that? And on and on. So it is a new thing for the town, and I just want to go into it thoughtfully. But I'm glad Marion is on the case. And I, you know, I just want to see these two units counted, most of all, by SHI. And I'm all up for creative solutions to a tricky situation, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Denny. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? Okay, no. So it sounds as if there's consensus that there's support for this, provided that the, either the Affordable Housing Trust or the Housing Authority is amenable to taking ownership and managing it. And that if we say that our next meeting, we could have a public hearing, that would give you adequate time, I think, to get their feedback. Because our next meeting would be July 25. It would give us sufficient time to advertise for two consecutive weeks in advance of the public hearing. So because we can't say definitively yes tonight without the, without knowing that those, one of those entities will take them, right? But we can say that we support that approach. And if you would like me, or Bill, or someone to attend a meeting of the Housing Authority, or of the, if it needs to go to some, I don't know, if it's the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust, or, is the Housing Authority a separate entity?
Housing Authority is actually independent of the town. It's kind of a unique thing.
Right, okay.
So consideration can be given to the idea of simply conveying directly to the Housing Authority. I would really like to talk to the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust, to see what their interest is in having some control over this. But in any case, there are two entities that could take title directly, I believe, from what we were just saying. And I think that is correct, because they are independent. And I will certainly be speaking to the chairman of the Housing Authority Board, I guess, and also to someone from the, and the chairman of the Trust, before we get to the hearing, to see if they want to have any discussion preliminary to that, and whether they want someone from the Planning Board, or Bill Clark, to be at that meeting. Because we really need to get feedback quickly, to see whether there is a big problem with this, that we can't solve. I just want to very briefly respond to the comments that were just made. The town does have experience through the Housing Authority of managing property. I mean, they've done it for years. They own two-family homes, and they rent them. So we certainly know they do it. The Housing, Affordable Housing Trust hasn't had the opportunity yet to do it directly. And whether they, as I say, one option is for them to take title, and then to have the management through the Housing Authority, which gives them some control, if they're interested in having control.
Marion, before you move on beyond that, Bill, you are familiar with the Housing Authority owning two families and managing them in Milton, correct?
Yes.
Do you know how many buildings they have, or how many units they have in Milton?
They have a lot of units. They probably have half a dozen two-family homes. They've got, I don't think they have any single families, but they do have multifamily up at Miller Court.
Miller Court is off of Brook Road?
No, Miller Court is off of.
Pleasant.
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 Ridge Hill, whatever it is, the Pleasant.
Back, yeah. They also manage some group homes in town.
Okay. And they, they don't have any reporting to town administrator or anyone else?
Not to the town directly. They report to the state.
State, right? Okay. Okay, so Marion, Bill, you had something else on?
State, right.
The state monitors Housing Authorities, not the town. They're separate entities.
Right.
Great.
Before we get too far, before we get away from this, the Housing Authority and the Housing Committee did have a couple of questions the other night. Has this property been lead tested? Are the units, do the units have independent utilities, so that they can be independent units? Those were their initial ones, and then I gave you the other. Who pays the taxes? Who pays the building insurance?
And I would add to that, that under Department of Housing and Community Development Regulations, in order to enter into a restrictive agreement, a regulatory agreement, and rental agreement, the house has to be inspected, and it has to be compliant with code. So that may be something that the town will need to ask be provided prior to conveyance, so that they don't have to assume that cost. Again, these are just things that need to be discussed.
And those are the?
There would be inspections. There would be plumbing, there would be electrical, and there would be a building inspection.
They want to make sure those are done before they're.
That's just from my recent quick reading of, you know, the requirements for this type of, called allow a local assistance units. It's not a 40B project. It's a unique category that's been created in order for a town to be able to have this type of approach. And that, by the way, would be what they would, that would be how they would categorize this, whichever way it's, it ends up being conveyed. I suppose, I mean, you're kind of talking about something different, possibly, with the Housing Authority, but it's certainly going to be affordable housing. But if you want it to be moderate-income housing under a regulatory agreement, then that's what you need to hear from the Housing Authority on. And I do too. We do.
Just for the record, because we've been talking about the two, like, I think we're coalescing, or we've been talking about, you know, I've been talking about one, and others have been talking about different, about this property and there being kind of two options, rental and purchase. But that, for other people that are watching, that isn't the only option here. Because, you know, if we do not approve this, then they have to go find a different property. And they would have to find another property that falls in line with that, the bylaw that's written. And so I, just, because I heard a couple of comments about, we definitely want to have affordable housing, you know, two more, you know, matters. And I absolutely agree with that. The way I'm looking at this property is, I care about affordable housing, but I care about affordable housing beyond just making sure it counts on that list. However, it doesn't mean that it doesn't have to be both. The third option was, that we talked about last time, is that we don't approve it, and they would have to go back and find another property that actually falls in line with the bylaw. So I just want to make sure, again, for the record, it's not either this or that. There is more options out there.
Well, I think one of the.
I want to just interrupt, though, because a concern I have here, because I, having been, gone back to DHCD, coming into this only a few days ago, but it's this. The bylaw and the special permit talk about homeownership only. And what DHCD is coming back and saying to us is that they will not, they will not include on the SHA, SHI, a unit that consists of a small unit of condominiums.
They said they wouldn't, I thought I heard from Kathy, and Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong, but their issue is that this was a multifamily unit, two small units. It doesn't mean that they wouldn't take two units, or two separate houses, and I'm not saying that you're going to go out and find two 3,000-square-foot homes. But it doesn't mean that, it, it doesn't mean that they would say no to a single-family home, because they do that all of the time. Of course, they would say yes to a single-family home.
But Rich, the special permit allows.
We don't have them. I mean, you know, I'm just telling you that this house is.
I'm just saying that's how the bylaw is written, though.
But Rich, the bylaw allows a two-family. It allows one of the solutions to be a two-family.
It doesn't say rental, though, that's your problem. Or else you wouldn't need us to agree with it.
Yes, that's right.
Well.
I'm just saying that, I just want to, again, I'm not trying to rehash that, but that wasn't the only, this is not the only option.
But I'm going to say, though, that having been on the board when this was reviewed and written, we did not anticipate that DHCD would only approve a two-family as a rental, and not as an ownership. We had no way, it's not in their guidelines, has been said, it's not in their regulations. We had every confidence that they would accept that as an option. It was unforeseen. So we did.
It wasn't an option before, though. They didn't have the property when you were deciding.
But the special permit, the special permit was issued, and that's what we're working with now. We're not, we can't go back and revisit the terms of the special permit. I mean, we're sort of being forced to by DHCD in some ways. But the fact that it's rental versus condominium, having the, my recollection in all of our discussions on this, that wasn't the primary factor in terms of the four options that were listed.
I'm not looking to argue that. I'm just talking about specifically what I thought I recall Kathy coming back and saying, is they didn't like that you're building these big homes over here, and now you're coming back with a two-family of 9,000, whatever other square foot. It doesn't match.
Are you saying DHCD said that?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Kathy.
They may have, but that's not, that is not what they're saying now. I don't know that they knew that much about what was going on. I think it was an excellent research and conversation that was conducted. But I gave them a lot more information when I went back to them, including what is in my letter, which explains the history of the Pulte project, and, you know, where the money went, and how it's being used. And I heard none of that in the feedback. And I heard none of that in the feedback from DHCD now. So I don't know what was said before, but I do know what I heard from them this week, last week.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, so I think Richard, Richard and Marion, you're reflecting the conversation that I had with Rieko, Chris, and Owana. And that was my conversation with them, but Marion gave them a much more detailed letter, with a lot more history in the site, than my conversation on the phone with them. And as I said, they started out with, they don't like two-unit condos, period. You know, they just didn't like two-unit condos. Two-unit rentals are fine, but two-unit condos are not. So that was their biggest issue, and then we, and I've done a two-unit rental in the town of Lincoln with the Affordable Housing Trust. And we did that as a local action unit. So I knew that that's something that has, they've approved before, and I didn't have any, you know, but they, they just didn't, they didn't, they started off with different information, and Marion gave them a lot more detail.
Can I just make a follow-up? So I just want to respond to you, Rich. All things being equal, I agree with you. I would prefer to see this be homeownership, too. And I think that there's a lack of affordable housing across the board, but certainly ownership opportunities. So I was thrilled that we were going to be able to make this work in a homeownership. I think, to Cheryl's point, and to my recollection, we didn't really discuss it, because I don't think we even contemplated this being a possibility. So we were trying to push for homeownership, because that's a harder thing to achieve. But I think, given what I know now, I would still prefer to make whatever adjustment to put these two units online. But I think your point is very well taken. I think it's something that we should think about in the future, as far as having a policy discussion. What do we want to really promote? Do we want to promote a mix? Do we want to promote homeownership? What are the barriers to creating that home, those homes? And how can we overcome them? Because we do have tools...
Sure.
At our disposal. So I just didn't, I didn't want to not acknowledge, because I do agree with you.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I do know that at the, at the joint meeting, there was a discussion of other alternatives that the Board could take after the units become available. So I'm not looking to take and shoot these down. But there is the potential that if the Housing Authority, or the Affordable Housing, if the Affordable Housing Trust were to own the building, they could take and change the building, and sell the building as an affordable building. And they claim that, in the city of Boston, they're selling two-family houses to an individual, where it is a rental unit on top of an ownership unit. So the owner is an affordable person, the tenant is an affordable person. It's a harder process to get to, and it's something that we're looking into.
That's interesting.
But this is a longer-term, and you don't want to, going through the Affordable Housing Trust, it could be a parking place until they could turn around and wind up selling the affordable unit. But again, it still has that perpetual deed on affordability.
But does it still stay on the SHI?
Yes.
Okay. As long as it stays on the SHI, and they find another creative way to...
That would be the requirement, and that's one of the issues we're looking into.
An SHI is the list you're talking about?
It's one of the things they're working on, the city of Austin is doing.
Subsidized housing inventory is what counts towards the 40B.
I like the idea, but don't let it derail, or slow up anything that's taking place here.
Whatever policies they feel like applying.
Right, and they're flawed, every policy is flawed.
And they could change, you never know.
But that may answer Rich's future thought about...
Sure.
It answers both, but it's in the future, and it's going to take more work. It shouldn't derail getting these two units now.
And again, and I agree, thank you for saying that, because it's not that I'm against these things.
Absolutely, I get it.
It's just that, when you start saying, we can't ever do this, so this is what we're going to do, so great. This town is never going to have affordable housing, ownership, because we're just going to get, you know, this is just going to keep happening again and again. We've got to fix that, to your point, for the future. Because I will tell you, I would never, if I was on this, I never would have approved it this way. I'm not saying I would have done it better, it's just, knowing now, hindsight, I'd never, I would never.
No, I think that's true of every, absolutely everybody. I mean, even I followed this permitting process. It seemed like a good solution. It sounded good. I think it is good, there's just this one problem. And you do run into these issues with regulatory agencies. The only other option that I see that is immediate resolution, is that you say it doesn't have to go on the SHI. And if you do that, then you have an issue, because the zoning itself refers to the SHI, and so do a number of our other, you know, other zoning, so do a number of other types of zoning that we've written recently as overlays. And I'm more bothered by that from a legal standpoint, in terms of making the change, than I am by just changing, by amending the permit to add another option in this case. But I do think it's, this is a topic worthy of considerably more discussion. Because I think, this idea that you can create a comparable unit within a $700,001 million home development is very unrealistic, in my view, otherwise it's possible, because you could have a corner somewhere where, you know, but you can't, it's not like a 40B development, where you create a number of units, the units are all mixed up together, they have to look similar, and there's all kinds of ways of regulating that. It's not like that, because these are not, these values are too far apart. So I think you need to think about that a lot more, and I'll certainly be happy to work on this very quickly, if you feel it's worth it.
So do we need a motion to continue?
Well, this is not, this is not a public hearing, I thought, right?
So before, so first of all, thank you, you know, thank you for the discussion, and, you know, I've heard a number of different comments and perspectives, and, you know, I'm hopeful that there's a desire here to work something out rapidly, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we couldn't have the participation from, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust, or the Housing Authority, whomever that might turn out to be. Because that seems like one of the open items. I think, just what I wanted to say right now is, that I'm concerned that the, that I may not be able to, that the owner of the property was anticipating a closing tomorrow, and I'm not sure that the direction is solid enough to be able to make that happen. So my, but I'm hopeful that we will be able to get a little bit more time, so that this question can be answered, because it seems like, with the input from the Affordable Housing Trust, there is some support amongst the Planning Board to make the change that Marion has suggested, with an amendment, with the proper notice for a public hearing. The other couple of things that I would just ask be contained, or thought about, with either an agenda item, a public hearing notice, and the Board itself, is, in the event that it doesn't come to pass, then, well, let me look at it in the positive. In the event that it does come to pass, and we're able to do this proposal, then I would just want to be assured that, that the step that we take, that we all take, if we are able to pull this proposal together, is indeed in compliance with the zoning. So that's one thing. I think that's obvious, but I'm, so I want to make sure that that is accurate. And then the second thing...
Well, that's a question you should be asking your counsel to ask to get that answer, not us. You know...
Well, fair enough. So...
I'm sorry to say that, but I'm, so, you know, almost 4:00 in the morning here in Sweden, so...
All right, so I have just one more thing then.
I guess we're moving along.
No, I have one more thing. And the last thing is, the comment was brought up a couple times, that, well, it may not happen, and it's not a done deal, and there's other options, and one of the other options is the fee in lieu. So I would ask that, and there's comments made, well, that's, that's open-ended, there's no formula, how do you determine that? Great questions. So I would just ask that the fee in lieu be pinned down for the next meeting. In the event that this doesn't proceed, then maybe we just go with the fee in lieu. And for consideration, I know that in Marion's letter, there was a suggestion of the value, which was based on the purchase price that Pulte paid the town, or the trustees, for the town farm property, was $5 million, divided by 23 lots, is $220,000 a lot. Two lots were to be set aside as one of the options for affordable use, and the value of two lots would be $440,000. So that would be a number that has a basis in history and valuation, and the purchase price that was paid for the property. So something else to think of. I think that what I believe we would all like to have happen, no later than the next meeting, is to have this resolved in a final fashion. So that's why I'm bringing that up now, not that I prefer to do that, but I think it's important, because there is also, in the special permit, a time deadline. And although it's not, it's not in danger of expiring in the next couple of weeks or months, it, there is a deadline in there. And I think that, you know, even though the Board perhaps has the authority to extend the deadline, or adjust the deadline, or amend it, I really would hope that we don't have to do that, that we would all be able to get it wrapped up at the next meeting.
So...
Thank you very much.
I'll just make two comments.
There is one other deadline that is built in there that you didn't mention, and that is, this needs to be done before the 11th house is started.
That's what I meant, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
But you're right, thank you.
We're there, because there's 10 foundations now.
I just want to note that the...
I think it's sold, actually. It's not started. But you're right.
Yeah, it's coming, I mean, it's coming quickly.
So to advertise for two consecutive weeks would mean, an advertisement would have to go to the Milton Times by July 5. That would give an advertisement in the July 11th, and in the July 18th papers. So you have basically a week, with a holiday thrown in, to see whether you could get some feedback. If you, we don't need a public hearing necessarily to go forward with a payment in lieu, because that's not a change to the special permit.
That's one of the items of the special permit. I can't give you the date of the next Housing Committee, but it is in July. If I do, I'm going to disconnect Kathleen.
What's it on? Is it on the town?
You could do that.
You're talking about the Housing Trust?
No, 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 no. That's why I didn't keep, I keep poking the phone, but it won't let me get to my calendar with...
Did you say Housing Committee?
Housing Trust, which, what meeting?
It's going to be a joint meeting of the...
Would I have been invited? Because I'd have it, too. I mean, if it was our meeting, I'd be...
If Melinda didn't, she maybe didn't send it out yet, because it's a couple of weeks ago.
All right, so I just want to make one other...
I'll give it to you before you leave.
Yeah, I get it.
But we've got to say goodbye to Kathleen first.
She probably wouldn't mind. It's 4:00 in the morning, then.
Yeah. Kathleen, you're welcome to drop off. Now, one last thing I wanted...
I would like to, I would like to go.
All right.
All right, enjoy the rest of your trip.
There's no more votes, so she...
Nothing else, yeah.
I just want to say that the option about the town farm, two select board members this week spoke to me about that. As you know, the select board members are the trustees for the Governor's Trust. And they, members of the Affordable Housing Trust have spoken to them. Actually, the special permit, in rereading the affordable section, does say that that should be the first path sought. And then, if failing that, that other options be available. And so to jump from not doing the two-unit to the payment in lieu, jumps over that as well. So I just, they, there may be, I don't think they've had a vote, so I can't say that they have come to a vote about that, but the two members that I spoke to said that there would be interest in having a discussion. I just relay that to you, so that...
It would be nice to hear that, the answer.
So you have time between now and our next meeting to not only think about the payment in lieu, but to think about whether you would reach out to the trustees.
Well, just one thought on that. I mean, you're right, that is in there, and is listed as the preferred option, but is also a six-month time period within which that was supposed to happen.
Right.
And it's been two years.
Right, the problem was getting a plan in place from the Select Board. I mean, I wasn't involved in any of this, but I followed it, you know, from the audience, so to speak. And, you know, it's been taking some time to talk about, and try to figure out what should happen. So it's not, not that it's off the table, but it doesn't seem to happen quickly. I'm just saying that, so I just...
And I think there's, I think there's a couple other concerns. Not only is it, you know, we're well past the deadline within which it was supposed to have happened. Number two is, we're still talking about for-sale duplex that the DHCD has said they're not interested in adding to the SHI. That's what the language in the special permit says regarding the town farm property, the abutting property.
It doesn't say that it has to be a two-family, though. And it does...
It says in one of the buildings. And that was the intent at the time. So, yeah, maybe it doesn't have to be a two-family, but it has to be created on its own 20,000-square-foot lot. So if you do two buildings, now you've got to create two 20,000-square-foot lots. I don't know how that happens there. There's no road frontage. You know, they're, so it's, I, so I respectfully hear what you're saying about jumping over that, so to speak, but I think that is, we considered it, and thought it was, even before we heard the DHCD's decision on, you know, as they've come down, I don't see how that would address that. I think we'd just be having the same issue with the DHCD, saying, oh, those aren't going to count in the SHI, either, for very similar reasons to what they've said about the East Milton property, but...
I mean, to be clear, there's four options given, and you are to come to us with your option, preferred option. You've done that, and you've told us what you think your second preferred option's going to be, and we can consider that. But because it was mentioned to me twice, it was raised with me twice this week, I did want to mention it back to you.
Sure. No, and I'd be happy to talk to them, but it's the first time I've heard that in a couple of years.
One of those options is payment? Is that what...
Yes.
Yeah, and I would like to hear what they say, because, and I'm not saying they're going to say this, and I would think they wouldn't, but maybe they say the money is worth more than that, because they have a project they want to do over here, and that would help. I mean, it would be interesting to hear from the stewards of that property, what they feel.
Well, the whole idea about this, pin it down, it's been very difficult to, we've talked about formulas here in the past, and we did come up with amounts for two different developments. The, I'm forgetting what Todd Hamilton's development is called. Marion, you were the attorney for...
Wentworth Farm.
Wentworth Farm, and then also the one...
Marina Estates.
Marina Estates on Highland. And it's not an exact science to come up with a figure, but...
He knows what it is. I mean, he knows what you can afford, a certain property.
Yeah, I mean, he knows what he paid for the land, but we also know that he had to invest a lot into putting in roadways, and putting in utilities, and so forth. So there's a certain amount, it would be, if you sold that lot, I mean, what we've talked about in other cases, is if you sold the lot at a market rate, and here's what that is, if you sold the lot at an affordable price, that's calculated by the state, the difference is, you know, kind of thing, and we've worked our way through various justifications for coming up with prices, but it's not as exact a science as it may seem, is my point, anyway.
So are we going to reconsider this on the 20?
I'm sorry, but could I just ask, has the developer explored the option of the two land lots on site? And what would the Affordable Housing Committee think of that? Because that would then put the onus on the town to put affordable units on it at a later date, and those affordable units wouldn't be consistent with the type of homes that are there. But is that something that the committee would be interested in, or were those interested in affordable housing would prefer?
Well, I think, in that case, those are sold, so those wouldn't necessarily go to the town. I mean, that was my understanding, but I suppose they could be... I mean, that was my understanding, but I suppose they could be...
All the lots have been sold?
They could be, no, 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 what I mean is the affordable lots. But those, I suppose, could, ownership could transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust, I suppose, who would then be responsible to deliver the units.
But if I may...
Yeah, but housing trusts can't, they can't build, they can't build housing. No town agency can build housing. It costs twice as much as what it costs Pulte to build the housing.
Right.
You know, that's just never, they'd have to put it out to bid, get somebody like Habitat or whatever to take over the lot. We would be looking at something happening three or four years from now.
All right, so given the hour, I think we've exhausted what we can accomplish with this tonight. So I'll take a motion to adjourn, and we'll put this on the agenda. You can let us know by the 5th whether you think it's going to be a special permit or if you think we're going to be going towards the, the payment in lieu. So you can just let Bill know, okay? With, Marion, you would end up with an application for an amendment to the special permit?
Yeah, I would, I will work on that right away, so it's ready. And the amendment, just so you understand, would be to add another option. It's the simplest way to amend, and it does the least change to what you already have in place. It would add to that fourth option that you, that you would purchase a two-family unit suitable for rental to blah, 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 and then you would convey it to the town. The town would own it in some fashion, either the, I don't think you have to get into more specifics than that, but that's the general idea. So I'll come up with some...
I think the amendment could also be that the planning board at its discretion could either waive or adjust the minimum square footage.
I don't understand what, is that in the special permit?
It is, it's in the special permit.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. That's why you had all that discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was coming into this very late.
That's okay, but I just want to point it out to you while you're drafting the language.
So that would be, that would be part of the amendment.
Right.
Okay.
So one process question. Who puts the July 5 deadline ad in the paper?
The town.
You do, okay.
You'll have to pay for it, but we'll put it in.
Sure, okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
We talk, we come up with...
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Cheryl Taguayis, yes?
Rich Beal, yes.
Eberlanderson Lammero, yes.
Danny Swinton, yes? And we lost Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, yes.
Thank you both, and especially Kathleen, on vacation, for joining us. Oh, and Denny, you're on vacation. Thank you too for joining us on vacation, both of you.
I'm not speaking now.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, goodbye.
Bye.
Bye, Kathleen.
Bye.